Welcome to the October 27th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dr. Strayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by Dr. Gregory DeVor.
Please join me in our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
God our Father, we are grateful for the opportunity which we have to be here this evening. We ask thee for a special blessing on the members of the Glendale leadership of this city that they will be able to accomplish the task and the business that's before them this evening. We ask thee bless them with wisdom and with insight as the problems that are raised by the members of this community will be thoughtfully considered. We ask thee bless those who are presenting information. They will do so and be able to convey the information they've prepared in a way that's understandable and insightful. We ask thee for a special blessing on their troops and the military and those who are serving for these government positions around the world to protect it from harm's way. We are grateful for all the blessings of life that we enjoy in this free country. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Certainly. The agenda for the October 27, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, October 22, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next is presentation and appointments. At 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of November 3, 2009.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, I'll go to Bob McFaul, Assistant City Manager, for the report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, November 3, we have a number of meetings throughout the day. There will not be a specific housing authority, but there will be a joint meeting of the City Council and the housing authority. On that agenda, there is one item. The Director Planner will be giving the 2009 Quality Life Indicators Report. There'll be a Housing, excuse me, Redevelopment Agency meeting that day at 2:30, and there will be two business items. The first, report from the Director of Development Services regarding the financing strategy for the Central Glendale Redevelopment Project area. And then, second, a report also from the Director of Development Services regarding the Placal Redevelopment Act. There will be another joint meeting, this one with the City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency with four items. First, the Directors of Public Works and Development Services regarding the Grandview Avenue and Sonora Avenue at Grade Railroad Crossing improvements. Next, the Director of Development Services regarding the Third Implementation Agreement to ABC Seven Owner Participation Agreement. Next, the Director of Administrative Services and Finance regarding the Professional Services Agreements with HDL, Corin and Cone, and Hindeliner Delamas and Associates for Property Tax and Sales Tax Consulting. And then, the Directors of Planning and Development Services regarding the creation of a Downtown Entertainment District. That evening on the City Council, at 6 o'clock, there's three items. The first is an action item for the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding GWP Glendale Water and Power Update on the State and Federal Energy and Water Legislative Report. Next, the Director of Administrative Services and Finance regarding the Prop 1A Funds Report in the City Clerk's Office. And then, lastly, the Director of Planning regarding the 2010 Census Outreach Plan and Funding Request Report.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
At 3B is sponsors recognition for Great American Cleanup Day.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. For the last 21 years, this city has run a Cleanup Day in either May or June, and this year, we were pleased to run a Cleanup Day where we had over 260 volunteers. We ran the event as a sponsored event by the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale and the City of Glendale. Tonight, we're here to recognize those community agencies that helped make that event possible by helping us out with volunteers or with financial support. It's a huge undertaking to run an event like this and the scale and scope that it is because we do lots of things on that day. We paint out graffiti, we clean up trash and litter. One of the more tedious things is cleaning up all those cigarette butts from the downtown area that those inconsiderate people leave as souvenirs for us in our community. We paint out graffiti all along the Los Angeles River because people perceive that to be the City of Glendale as they drive up and down the 5 freeway. We want them to think that even though it's not ours, that if they think it's ours, it gets the same care that the rest of our city enjoys throughout the year. On that day, we remove about 10,000 square feet of graffiti when you add up everything that we do. We pick up a ton of trash, and none of that would be possible without our sponsors tonight. You can see on the screen the kids painting out the graffiti at the LA River. You can see we get a full scope of age of volunteers, and they're all pretty industrious when they do that. We planted this year along the median on Palm Drive. If you remember, that one of our water-saving strategies this year was cutting the irrigation there. The Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale purchased drought-tolerant plants to replace that. We planted volunteers. You can see them doing that. And I'd like to report to you now that they, well, not particularly thriving, are certainly growing and doing as well as drought-tolerant plants can do whenever we get to the dry part of the year. You can see that we had all kinds of things going on there. The volunteers meet and gather at our plaza. They get a pep talk, and then they go out and do some very strong and industrious work. We feed them and entertain them a little bit, and then make sure they've had a great experience so that they'll want to come back and do this year after year after year. A little bit changed this year in terms of our recruitment. We use some of the social networking tools to begin our recruiting, either through Facebook and through Twitter, and we are very, have a very strong following in terms of people that come out and volunteer in our community, and it is a very powerful tool to do that. I'd like to have, if I could, all of our sponsors join me up here so that, Mr. Mayor, you can present them with their certificates. So I have to tell you, none of those wonderful things that you saw up there would be possible without their, without their support. From Glendale Adventist Medical Center, Andre Nittiken. From Glendale Water and Power, Mr. Ned Basson. From Jay's Maintenance, who also sponsors our city's Adopt a Block program in total, Ed Waldheim. From Glendale Department of Public Works, Mr. Steve Zern. From Kaiser Permanente, demonstrating their commitment to the health of our community, both physical and environmental, Mr. Robert Stoll. A longtime sponsor for us in a number of things, and a facial recognized Shirley Tap from the Glendale City Employees Federal Credit Union. From Lakeside Community Healthcare, another sponsor of this event for many years, Julie Fine. From Lexus of Glendale, you guys can keep coming up here, this is going to be a huge crowd by the time we're done, Mr. Johnny Harrison. A sponsor that has been with us for the entire 21 years, Jewel City Kiwanis Club. From Glendale Management Association, from the management employees charitable contributions, Jake Wrights. From the Glendale News Press, Mr. Carlin Chesney. Also from the Glendale News Press, Dan Evans. And then, there are a couple of people who couldn't be with us tonight, but I want to make sure that you recognize their commitment to this community. From the Walt Disney Company, Joan McCarthy. From DreamWorks Animation, Michelle Davis. And from, oh, that's it. We got everybody here.
Okay, well, let me start by reading the proclamation, and it says, "In appreciation for your generous sponsorship of Glendale's 21st Annual Great American Cleanup. Your involvement in our community is what makes Glendale a great place to live. Signed, Frank Quintero, Mayor of Glendale." This is one of the few years that I wasn't able to attend. I was actually not in town, unfortunately, but it is a great event, and there is a big difference. At the end of the Cleanup Day, Glendale just seems to shine a little bit more, and I'm particularly impressed at type of companies that are participating, from DreamWorks, Glendale Adventist, the news press, which is the paper of record here. If it's not reported in the news press, it never happened. And they're a, they do a great job because they do all the advertising for us and so forth. David Schultz is an old-time real estate property management firm. Jewel City Kiwanis, been around forever, as he mentioned from the very beginning. All the employees at GW Glendale Water and Power. Jay Maintenance, who's been very active, his entire family's been active in the city, both here and up in La Cressena and the Montrose area. Home Depot, a great sponsor. Redevelopment Agency and staff. Glendale Memorial, like Adventist participates multiple ways in the, in the community. The Public Works Department the same way. Kaiser Permanente. Walt Disney. Lakeside Community. The Glendale City Employees. The Federal Credit Union. Baxter is another, it's actually, technically, it's located in the LA portion of San Fernando Road, but they always participate with us. Glendale Management Association. And finally, Lexus, along with his, with the CEO, who does lots of things for the community and lots of things for Glendale. So I'll have you, Steve, now.
Mr. Mayor, I had one oversight, and it's a glaring one. Home Depot supplies all of our supplies for that, and I forgot to mention them. You very graciously mentioned them whenever you did the certificate, but the Home Depot has been a corporate sponsor for us for years and years. Please get up here. And with that, they got a, they got a special recognition, but they provide all of our supplies for that day, and that's a tremendous resource for us.
Home Depot's open for you. Home Depot. There we go. His maintenance. I think you're here from just, it's too many checks. Thank you so much. Swat is here. You're not here today. I'll get down and get you. Thank you, one and all.
Thank you very much. As a real brief summary, as everybody's finding their seats, you can see that this is a community effort, as much as it takes all of volunteers to make this community a special place. You can see what it is when you have this kind of support from your business and service community, and we appreciate all of their support and are looking forward to a great event, now just about six months away. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor and Council, at 3C is a proclamation designating November 1 through 7, 2009, as California Retired Teachers Week.
I have a proclamation, and it reads as follows. Whereas California Retired Teachers Association, CRTA, an organization of retired teachers and interested persons, has had continuous growth since its founding in 1929, CRTA Glendale Foothill Division has a current membership of approximately 550, many of whom are active volunteers in the community. The purpose of CRTA is to support public education, teachers, and provide statewide scholarships, maintain a mutual nonprofit benevolent and protective organization, safeguard public school teachers' retirement system, promote the welfare and social relationship of its members, support beneficial education legislation, and oppose detrimental legislation. California Retired Teachers Week was initiated by CRTA to spotlight the extensive volunteer work CRTA members conduct in their local communities. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the city, proclaim November 1 to 7 as California Retired Teachers Week and commend the CRTA members for their dedication and valuable contributions over their many years of outstanding service to our youth and to our community. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bevoitella. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I represent the Glendale Foothill Division of the California Retired Teachers. We have almost 500 members in our division who give thousands of volunteer hours each year to our schools and community organizations. We're honored to be here and for you to proclaim California Retired Teachers Week of November 1 through 7. Our division has selected Jan Burke to receive the proclamation. She taught in Glendale for 28 years as an English teacher, grades 7 through 12. She's been an active member of the Retired Teachers Group for over 25 years, serving in the past as our president. She currently chairs our scholarship program, which provides scholarships for Glendale Community College students, and she serves on our legislative committee to keep us informed of legislative matters concerning public education. She will be the one to present the proclamation to your Board of Education on November 3, and with pleasure, I present you Jan Burke. Thank you very much for this honor, and we will display it at the Board of Education and then take it to the members of the organization. Thank you.
May I ask you, what schools?
Creson Valley High School and Clark.
What years were you there?
Oh, let's not.
I went through the Glendale school system, class 57.
Let's put it this way, Mr. Weaver.
Maybe you were there when she was going.
This will probably be the first time that I've seen Ms. Burke, that I've been able to call her Jan, so.
There you go, see? Good to see you again. Did she teach you?
Me and almost all my brothers and sisters, so.
Yes.
You should have presented that.
It was a joy. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Had I known Mr. Strayman was a former pupil, I would have given it to him and gotten into some interaction with the teacher and his. Okay, next, please.
At 3D is a proclamation honoring the 30th anniversary of the Verdugo Fire Communication Center by proclaiming October 28, 2009, as Verdugo Communications Day.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Verdugo Fire Communication Center was established on August 1, 1979, to dispatch emergency fire and medical resources for the city of Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. The city of Glendale was the first participant in the regional system, with the city of Pasadena joining the system in 1979. The city of Burbank entered in 1981. The cities of South Pasadena, San Marino, joined the Verdugo Communication System in 1996. The city of Monrovia in 1999. The cities of Arcadia, Sierra Madre in 1999. The city of San Gabriel in the year 2000. The city of Monterey Park in 2005. The city of Alhambra in 2006. The city of Monobello in 2009. So that gives you some idea of what's going on at the Verdugo Fire Communication Center. Whereas the men and women who devote their time and energy to the duties of fire communications have assumed responsibilities essential for the safety of their fellow citizens, repeatedly demonstrating their commitment to professionalism in the performance of fire and emergency medical services dispatching. Upon the occasion of the 30th anniversary of the Verdugo Fire Communication Center, it's deserving of our specific, it's deserving of specific public recognition and highest commendation for the outstanding dedication and professionalism shown by past and present members in the performance of their duties. Therefore, I, as Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim October 28 as Verdugo Fire Communications Day and congratulate the Verdugo Fire Communications Center, its dispatchers, administrative, and support staff for the leadership they provided to assure fire and life safety for the citizens of Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, South Pasadena, San Marino, Arcadia, Monrovia, Sierra Madre, San Gabriel, Monterey Park, Alhambra, and Monobello. And I wish, best wishes for your continued success in the future.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, thank you very much for this proclamation honoring the, not only the system and what has happened over the last 30 years. An idea sparked back in 1978 by the three fire chiefs, and it's obviously grown to the system that we see today. And forgive me if my phone goes off, but we're quite busy this evening with the high winds, a little activity in Monrovia and Arcadia right now, so. But the system has grown, and it functions quite well. We're at 43 fire stations now, over 100 apparatus, and Unified Response Concept, which means that essentially, any of those apparatus within the system, Glendale can arrive in Alhambra, and Alhambra can arrive in Glendale to help each other out, and it's neighbor helping neighbor, and simply just helping the folks along, and that's what we do every day. Simple concept, hard to reach sometimes, and we try to strive for that. More importantly, though, it's about the people, and I couldn't be more proud of the staff that we have. We do it with a very, very small staff of 20 folks for all those 12 agencies, and they do it quite well, very committed, highly professional. So this really is for them, and I thank you for that. I also want to cordially invite you to tomorrow's celebration at Fire Station 21, starting at 1 o'clock, and open house from 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock, so hope you can join us. Thank you.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad Mr. Wise mentioned the underlying philosophy to Verdugo beyond just being a very cost-effective way to dispatch fire services. There has developed among the, is it now 12 agencies?
Twelve.
Twelve agencies, a philosophy that in effect drops the borders. It's dispatched as if it were one large public agency, whichever unit can arrive the most effectively and provide services, the one dispatched regardless of borders. It's quite a model for, for public service and, and other things that we should be looking at in that same vein, in the way we can cooperate. It's been a tremendous success.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, please. Next are appointments, and with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I will read all the appointments before I vote on them. At 3E is an appointment of Ms. Terri Chan to the Glendale Water and Power Commission. The nomination was made by Councilmember Friedman. At 3F is an appointment of Ms. Stephanie Landrigan to the Planning Commission, also nominated by Councilmember Friedman. At 3G is appointment of Ms. Paula Devine to the Commission on Status of Women. Nomination was made by Councilmember Friedman. And Councilmember Friedman's last nomination for this evening is 3H appointment of Mr. Peter Fuad to the Transportation and Parking Commission.
Okay, Ms. Friedman, would you like to make your comments?
Just briefly, two of these appointments are reappointments. Terri Chan has served on the GWP Commission in the past. I have chosen to nominate her for reappointment. She's extremely well-qualified, having worked for the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and many other agencies. She's basically been involved in Water and Power her entire career. Stephanie Landrigan is known, well, the other reappointment is Ms. Paula Devine, who's a very well-known community activist, involved in a lot of organizations. She's served as the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women quite effectively, and I have the honor of nominating her for reappointment. Stephanie Landrigan has been involved in many of our commissions in the past. She's served on the Design Review Board, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission, where most recently she served as the Chair. She is a licensed landscape architect. She's also a LEED certified. She was the Chief Landscape Architect for the Santa Monica Mountains Recreation and Conservancy Authority. She is currently serving as the head of the UCLA School of Landscape Architecture, so she has quite an amount of administrative experience, as well as a long history of working on land use issues. I think that she would be a great benefit to our planning commission. Peter Fuad is currently the President of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. He's also been a community activist for a number of years. He's also an attorney and has applied for a position on the Transportation and Parking Commission because he's had a longstanding interest in quality of life and how it relates to transportation. He's an avid cyclist, and I think brings a very refreshing approach to that commission.
Okay, so you will nominate?
I will nominate those four. Can they be taken together?
Yeah, C, D, E, F.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is at 3I, Commendation to the Unity Fest Committee.
Jeez. Shift over.
I think we have everybody here now. Thank you.
Okay, well, you know what? Why don't I start by reading the mayor's commendation and the names, and then you can, and I have some pins for two young, two young kids that are behind the crowd there.
Right.
Personally give them.
Stevens kids.
Make care. Steve's have a couple. I have two pins, two pins apiece for, for being such good kids. The mayor's commendation reads, "Receiving a commendation in appreciation for your diligence and the many hours of hard work necessary to organize a Unity Fest 2009. Congratulations for your part in putting together this valuable and highly successful community event," which I missed, unfortunately. I was, as I told the committee earlier in the day, I was on my way to Austin, Texas. That was, I really blew it this year. So Patrick Campbell, Carla Delgado, Rick Fox, Elisa Glickman, RP Andonian, Ken Kalatian, Lena Boyazin, Peter Jung, Mary Lamasa, Chang Lee, Stephen Lee, Zen Lopez, Barry McComb, Efrain Olivares, Jolene Wagner, Karen Fries, Dean Lopez, Zet Mullins, Ross Ferris, Rich Wells. Takes a lot to organize Unity Fest, a lot of people. Patty Betancourt, Alex Wu. And then, the Chair, who did a wonderful job as usual of putting, of working with the volunteers and with the staff and putting this Unity Fest together. John Drayman, he also has a certificate for various people that also recognizes their hard work.
These are our MCs.
Okay.
Who MC the entertainment portion.
The Unity Fest Glendale 2009. We appreciate your commitment to make a difference. And do the presentation. Ms. Mullins.
Mayor Quintero, councilmembers, it's an honor to stand before you tonight and be part of this wonderful committee that worked very, very hard to bring the community together and have Unity Fest Glendale 2009. As may, some of you have seen at the event, we've had over 16,000 people that attended the event. We had vendors that joined us from the Montrose Shopping Park Association. We had vendors from Brand Boulevard. We had visitors from all over. We had visitors from all over the city of Glendale and outside of the city of Glendale. This committee has worked really hard to promote the event, worked very hard to bring the vendors together. The performance was awesome. We had our Glendale Unified School District participated. Holy Family also have participated. As some of you can see the event on TV right now, vendors are really, they're having fun, barbecuing. So our, this is our eighth annual event, as you've announced, and it seemed to be growing every year. We seem to be doing better job every year and moving on and coming up with new ideas. So for our next year, we've already had our wrap-up meeting and I'm happy to announce that we already set up a date. It's going to be on October tenth on Brand Boulevard. So mark your calendars from now. We're going to be coming back stronger and hopefully to have to double the amount of people that we've had attended this year. So I do thank all of you for giving us the opportunity to work on Unity Fest and to bring the community together because without your blessings and your help and the leadership of Mr. Drayman, this event would have not have taken place. So thank you very much and we'll see you again next year around the same time. Thank you, Mr. Drayman.
Bravo.
Zen would like to make an announcement too.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we're very honored to present to you and also acknowledge the special MCs who took the time to participate in the Unity Fest and they are here today with us. May I present Ms. Marissa Wall. She is the Miss Los Angeles Chinatown Miss Princess, First Princess. Ms. Joyce Wong, Miss Los Angeles Chinatown Miss Friendship. Telma Aranda Sugai unfortunately cannot be here with us because she is in the Philippines right now, helping with the relief efforts for the victims of the typhoon. And so Elizabeth Reyes is here on her behalf. Ms. Reyes? Ms. Reyes, thank you. And Mr. Dan Renner is also here with us. Mr. Dan? The other MCs, we had Ms. Diane Yu, Ms. Ms. Asia USA, unfortunately she cannot be here with us. She's doing her, her, her role, traveling Asia. And also we have Christian Morale, who is an actor and he is filming at the moment, so he cannot be with us. So thank you very much for the honor and thank you for coming.
And before, before you go, let me, as I mentioned a little earlier in the day, let me thank you personally for all of the volunteer work that you do. I know how much time it takes, but you always do a tremendous job because there's volunteers here that have been doing it for a number of years. And on behalf of the City Council, I want to thank you personally. Then I also want to thank John Drayman, the Chair. This is the second year, right? This man knows how to put on an event. He may have his faults, but that's not.
But I know how to throw a party.
But that's not one of them, but he knows how to throw a party.
Mr. Weaver, just corrected you. What do you mean he may have?
What do you call it? But, and one of the things that I'm particularly happy about is just moving it to Brand Boulevard. And I think that's really opened up a whole new chapter in, in Unity Fest. I got lots of positive feedback. My, my wife and her dance troupe performed and the neighbors talked about it and everyone was really, really interested this year and, you know, having this kind of continue. So I'm really happy that it's going forward and I want to thank you all again and we'll start tomorrow. Get Mr. Drayman going tomorrow and going. And thank you, Zazet. You do a great job on this.
Bravo. You all did a great job and we thank you very much, the volunteers, the, those that are part of our Sister Cities Program, our Parks and Rec staff, our fellow City Council members who turned out to help support the event, and the public for showing up. It was a terrific event. If you ever really want to know what Unity Fest is about, just take out a coin out of your pocket, flip it over and see the part that says "Out of Many One." And that's what Unity Fest is about. It demonstrates the, it's the dynamism of this terrific city, its diversity and its class. And it's a great community-building event. And second year on Brand Boulevard, I think it's found a home there and it's growing. Terrific, terrific event. And Mr. Mr. Quintero, Mayor Quintero, thank you for allowing me to chair the event this year.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Bravo.
Before you move on, I have some. Yeah, yeah. Okay. We can make it now. Now, okay. Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to place on the agenda for next week and I would like to nominate to the Transportation and Parking Commission, Mauro Lorri Yakubian. And to the Glendale Water and Power Commission, Mr. Zanku Armenian. And we still have several weeks. Let's be clear on the deadline. The seventeenth is our last.
To the end of November.
End of November.
Well, to the end of November.
Yes.
Okay. We were trying to give you a date so that, we had said October, November, we tried to give you a date so you didn't run over. We can get everybody appointed by the end of November.
However, the sooner the better.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Any comments, Mr. Weaver?
I think everybody in the country heard the President of the United States talk yesterday about Smart Grid, which the city of Glendale has been working on for some time now. We got some great news an hour or two ago. It'll be in the paper tomorrow. I just wanted, Mr. Starburn, would you like to comment on what the Department of Energy Washington told us?
I don't have all the details, but staff generally has informed us that we are among a hundred communities that stand to receive a grant. We anticipate the neighborhood of twenty million dollars from the federal government and a million dollars from the state.
Which isn't half bad.
No, it's very, very good. By far the largest grant this city has probably ever received.
They've been pretty progressive in getting ahead of the curve, ahead of the President. It's going to reap us some great money. Staff deserves a lot of credit. Thank you.
Any comments? Mr. Najar, oh, well, actually, we'll wait. Any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr.
I would just like to report on, this is, well, for the public, this time of year, the fall, becomes a very busy time for council members in terms of just trying to cover the bases when it comes to all of the many public events that are going on in the city and trying to represent the city at those various events. And I had the opportunity to not only attend a public event last Friday evening, but to be a part of the event. To my surprise, I was invited to, to tell some ghost stories at the screening of the nineteen sixty-six Don Knotts film, The Ghost and Mr. Chicken, at Dunsmore Park on Friday night. It was a nice turnout. We want to thank the Glendale Parks and Rec who took their traveling inflatable movie screen operation that travels around all our city parks and I think this time it was parked up in Lockresina area, Dunsmore Park. Fun film, lots of families were out and yours truly reciting poetry about bats and leading some group singing and some scary ghost stories, some of which involving even my colleagues up here on the council dais. But you weren't there, so you wouldn't know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Friedman? Okay, before we get to Mr. Najarian, absolutely, like Mr. Weaver and all of us, we're very happy about the grant. The Smart Grid system is a great step forward for this city, not just for the energy savings, but also for the financial savings for many people who will actively be able to monitor their, their electrical usage. So I'm very, very happy that we've received a grant and we're going to be moving forward to install the, the units throughout the city. Now, Mr. Najarian, you wanted to make a presentation.
Thank you. And I, I won't be too long, but first of all, I wanted to apologize for missing last week's City Council meeting. And the reason I was gone is because I had traveled to Washington with the CEO of LA Metro. And in Washington, our goal was to fight for our fair share of transportation funding for the LA, for the LA region. I was able to have meetings with Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi, Barbara Boxer, Senator Boxer, Senator Feinstein, Congressman Henry Waxman, David Dreyer, Adam Schiff, as well as Congresswoman Judy Chu, Lucille Royball Allard, Grace Napolitano, and others. It was a very interesting, interesting trip. The, the point of the trip was to go out and lobby for additional funds. Unfortunately, when we got there, we realized that fourteen of the congresspeople, leaders of Congress, in a very strong objection, made a very strong objection to LA Metro's decision the previous month to unanimously approve the West Side Subway and the Downtown Regional Connector. So after I landed, most of my time was spent trying to put out the fires and trying to educate the congressmen and congresswomen on the, the issues involved. And their, their essential complaint was that the Pasadena Gold Line was not getting any, any chances to receive federal funds. And what they didn't realize is that through Measure R, that half-cent sales tax that we all approved, they're getting a dedicated locked-in approximately eight hundred million dollars. And we're hoping to break ground on the Gold Line in June and that'll go out to Azusa, maybe even further. And their goal was to break the, unfortunately, the goal was to break the unanimity of the MTA Board. And it takes quite an effort to get the MTA Board together on one subject. If you can imagine, there's just a wide variety of political views, geographic issues, ethnic issues, rich versus poor, north versus south, city versus county, county versus mayor, via regosa, and it goes on and on. So their attempt was to break, break that. And as Chair, I took that as a personal affront on the sovereignty of the locally-elected board and officials. They wanted us to not pass the Long Range Transit Plan or to pass it in the way they wanted us to pass it. Needless to say, and I got in from Washington that night about, Wednesday night about ten o'clock, we had an MTA Board meeting the next morning about nine. Needless to say, I worked through the night to try and build this coalition and keep it together and lo and behold, despite opposition by fourteen congressmen, basically the entire LA contingency, the LA Metro Board passed the Long Range Transportation Plan unanimously. And it's quite a feat. I don't think it's ever, we've had two unanimous votes on such large issues. And we have a little, Marty, how do we start this? Okay. This is a very important slide. If you look at one slide only, look at this slide. These green dots indicate the amount of federal funding that goes on a per capita basis to different regions throughout the country. And Godzilla in the northeast there that's swallowing up the country is New York and New Jersey. And that little speck at where we're situated, Los Angeles, is what we're getting. It's grossly, grossly disproportionate. Cities such as Orlando, no offense to the Floridians in the room, Salt Lake City, Denver, Portland, Seattle, Sacramento, Phoenix, Dallas, Houston, they all dwarf the amount of money that Los Angeles gets. It is the LA Metro's Board desire to change that around and bring some equity to the whole system. So we passed our Long Range Transit Plan. We're going to be approaching the federal government for something called New Starts Money. This New Starts is going to be going towards the West Side Subway, which will run currently from its termination now at Western, all the way to the sea. We're also going to have a downtown subway, which is going to connect all the subway lines that, that approach downtown and that, that end downtown. As we said, the Foothill Gold Line is not going to be left out. They are going to be breaking ground in June and they're going to be built out definitely to Azusa, perhaps even further. So we'll have some projects in the Pasadena area as well. We're going to be working on highways. We're going to be working on bus, bus routes as well. And the key to all this was the passing of Measure R. And I'll be honest, I was not in favor of Measure R. I didn't think it was fair enough to our area, but the voters of the county overwhelmingly passed that measure at about sixty-eight percent for that extra sales, sales hike. And I'm kind of happy that this map looks like spaghetti because we never had this before. These are all the transit lines and subway lines that are going to be built in the next twenty years and, and as well as on top of the existing lines in LA County. From the Orange Line to the, to the Wilshire Bus Rapid Transit, the Subway to the Sea, the Expo Line, the Crenshaw Line. That blue line is going to be the High Speed Rail that's going to be coming up from Anaheim, the first segment Anaheim, through LA and north. We were also discussing the need for High Speed Rail money when we were in Washington. The Metro Gold Line is going to open up next week. That's a line from downtown LA going into East LA. And that will also be extended further eastward, perhaps into Whittier or Montebello. We're going to almost double our bus fleet from about two thousand buses to four thousand five hundred buses, more than double it, actually. We're going to put some money into MetroLink to make sure that that system works in coordination with all those other rail lines that we have. In the Long Range Plan, we have a, a plan for a, a quick service between downtown LA, Glendale, and Burbank with a hybrid multiple unit, smaller-sized trains that run more frequently so you can get downtown. These are the highways. We're going to be building tons of highways, so the engineers, actually, it's a full employment job for the engineers. So engineers and consultants should be pretty happy, as well as creating tens of thousands of new jobs for the area. You can see the carpool lanes from the one thirty-four north to Santa Clarita. The I four oh five is going to have carpool lanes. We're going to widen the five freeway from the Orange County Line up to the six oh five. We're going to work on widening the seven ten. The seven ten tunnel remains in the plan, but there was, there was an end run that we did on that. I'm not sure I should address it publicly and disclose our hand, but those who are interested can contact me, but, but things are looking good for the, for us who are not in favor of the seven ten tunnel. And this plan really does support the ideas that you heard on council, that we should try to separate the freight, that we should try and work on transit and we should, we shouldn't necessarily just build that tunnel which is going to dump vehicles. Which, by the way, the interesting news is, the tunnel study just came out and if you look at it, it appears as though the most likely route for that tunnel is going to be, should it ever be built, of course, we're all officially against it here, but that tunnel most likely is going to end at the Verdugo Road area in Eagle Rock. That means it's going to hit the two freeway, not necessarily the two-ten freeway. So, you know, get your alarm bells out because it's one step closer. Those people who want to build the tunnel aren't necessarily looking at the Pasadena connection. It may be just on our, our southern border. And all these carpool lanes, et cetera, are going to be done. Good news for our. The good news for our area is that we have approximately, is it 250 million jono in regional highway operational improvements, which can be used for sound walls. I know the folks in La Cañada have almost already spent it for their sound walls. I know it's also an issue for the folks in the La Crocena area. Sound walls are a viable use of that money if that's how we decide to do that. And before Measure R, those sound walls were almost a pipe dream of getting built. Goods Movement, we're going to separate the trains from our crossings the best way we can. And high-speed rail maybe is a story for another time as we get closer. And that's it. That is our Long Range Transportation Plan. And exciting things are happening. We've really turned the corner in L.A. County with a commitment to transit and alternate ways of getting around besides a single occupancy vehicle. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for indulging.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian, for the update. All right. Before we go to the next item, which are the consent items, after the consent items, I would like to move up Action Item 8B, which is the appeal to the city council regarding the taxi cab service. Is that all right with the appellant, that we move it? That's okay? All right. Because we have a couple of staff members from the city clerk's office that are here and not feeling that well, and so let's move it up in case they have to answer any questions. All right. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Next is consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion and member of the council, where the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Move the consent calendar, except you'll be abstaining on A.
On the minutes.
It's me.
Can move the entire consent calendar, just note an abstention on the minutes.
I think I need to abstain on the October 6th.
You were actually here. I believe you recut yourself on one item and you on number 6, then left at the end of that meet, at the end of that, but you were here for the majority of that meeting.
Okay, a second.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please. Next would be oral communications. All right. This is the presentation portion, and we'll start with Colin Bogart and Ron Farina.
Mayor Quintero, councilmembers, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart. I'm with the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition, working with the city of Glendale on the Safe and Healthy Streets Project. And I'm here to announce that our series of community meetings continues. This week's meeting, I have a slide to show you. This week's meeting is going to be held at the Pacific Park Community Center. It's going to be this Thursday, October 29th, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. This is part of a continuing series of meetings where we are asking the community, people who live or work in Glendale, to come and share their knowledge and their experiences related to walking or biking in the city of Glendale. We had a very, very good meeting last week, and I look forward to another productive meeting this week. For more information, people can call 818-334-9731, or they can go to the website, which is la-bike.org/Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ron Farina, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff. This is the final city council meeting before the Fritz Coleman Comedy Night coming up this coming Sunday, November 1st, so I thought I'd take an opportunity to plug it just one more time. I'm going to ask our city clerk if he would also play the PSA that Fritz Coleman put together. Fritz is probably one of our biggest supporters for the city of Glendale and a big friend of the Red Cross, so we're happy to have him. It occurred to me that this event used to take place on Tuesday evenings, and we realized that we were not allowing the city council and all the city staff and other visitors to make our event, so we switched it over to Sunday several years ago, so hopefully a lot more people can come out and enjoy it. Fritz puts together this show every year. He brings together four, sometimes five or more, top-notch stand-up comics for everyone's enjoyment. It's a great show. This coming Sunday, there's two shows. There's one at 6:15, and there's one at 8:15, so we can accommodate those people who like to come a little earlier and get out a little earlier, those who want to come in the evening. We also have a VIP reception, which starts at 6:00 p.m. at the Phoenisha, and I'll just turn it over to Fritz Coleman.
Hello, I'm Fritz Coleman. I'm inviting you to my 18th annual comedy night to benefit the Glendale Crocena Valley chapter of the American Red Cross. 18 years in one location. Most banks can't say that. This year was Sunday, November 1st. Two shows, 6:15 and 8:15. Tickets are only $25. It's at the beautiful Glendale Center Theater again. You can't beat it. Go to arcglendale.org for tickets and further information. Hope to see you there November 1st. Thanks.
Well, I can't top that. Just to let you know, you're all welcome to come, and hope we'll see a big crowd on Sunday. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library and the friends of the library. Tomorrow night is the culmination of One Book One Glendale. This is the fourth, fifth time I've talked about it, and I'm glad to have talked about it because we have a fabulous finale for One Book One Glendale, and that is, we're going to have Lisa C. talk about Shanghai Girls. I've talked about this before, so the important thing I can tell you tonight is, come there. If you want to buy a book and get your book, if you already bought it autographed, you come as early as 6:30. The library's going to be closed to the public after 6:00. So we're looking forward to seeing everybody there at Shanghai Girl, Lisa C., tomorrow night at 6:30. The form program starts at 7:00 downstairs at the library. Now, the post-finale will come on November 19th, and that will be Amy Goldman-Coss, who has written a book for children called Poison Ivy. And her book's already been discussed, and that's kind of a special program for adults to bring their children or come themselves. It'll be a very educational thing. And she is a Glendale resident, Glendale author, and her column has already appeared in the L.A. Times. Now, this is, we're in the ninth year of the Author, Artist, and Friend series, and guess what? The person who started us out almost nine years ago, Vincent Bulyosi, will be here December 1st, 7:00 at the library. That's a Tuesday. Vince Bulyosi, for those who've never heard of him, is a nationally-known writer, famous lawyer, and we're calling the event An Evening with Vince Bulyosi because all his books are going to be featured at this event. All his books are going to be talked about, they're going to be sold and autographed, and that in itself should be a great event, and we will explore that further, the details of it. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. That concludes the first part of oral communications. Mr. Clerk, I'd like you to read 8B into the record.
8B is Director of Public Works regarding appeal to the city council regarding denial of owner's permit to operate taxi cab service in the city of Glendale by United Taxi of Southwest, Inc., DBA United Taxi of Glendale. At B1 is a motion denying application without public hearing. At B2 is motion remanding to the Transportation and Parking Commission for rehearing. And at B3 is motion setting a public hearing.
Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, go to the Director of Public Works, Steve Zern.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, let me have Mr. Bagnanian come up, give you a very quick history of this particular issue, and we're available for questions.
And please, for members of the audience, please turn in your speaker cards if you wish to speak. Go ahead, Ms.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the Glendale Municipal Code requires that taxi issuance of permits to taxi cab companies be regulated based on a need and necessity provision, which is outlined in the municipal code. The Transportation Parking Commission has the authority to set a cap on the number of permits that are issued annually for the operation of taxi cabs, as well as other types of vehicles. And then they also review the applications for taxi cab permits in the city of Glendale. Every year, there's a window between July and August, existing operators where their permits are expiring, or new operators can apply within that window, and then the commission, based on staff report and a hearing that is set, reviews the application process. In April of this year, actually, in May of this year, the city staff presented a report to the commission. For them, with respect to the operation of taxi cab operators, operations in the city of Glendale, we have a cap of 82 permits in the city. Staff recommended to the commission that since we already have 81 permits have been issued, there's only one permit left, that we reduce the number of permits, the cap to 81. And based on our historical information, since 2003, which we have revised the municipal code with respect to vehicle for hire, we've had basically that same 81, 80 to 81 permits that have been issued to five companies that are operating under different names in the city of Glendale. Essentially, there are two or three companies, they have different ownership or corporations that have been established, and they've been operating in Glendale. As far as the decision as to increase the cap, we didn't feel that there is a need for the increase in the cap because of existing operators are providing the level of service that we feel is adequate. City Clerk's Office that monitors the cap companies does not have any complaints about existing operators. On-time performance of the service has been adequate. We've done our own field check, so staff recommended that. Commission, after hearing, staff recommendation, listening to the existing operators who were invited to participate, a new applicant, United Independent Taxi, that is applying for a permit, was also there. After receiving input from all the available people that attended the meeting, they determined that they will maintain the cap at 82. They did not want to reduce it, and they did not want to increase it. Some of the commissioners are of the opinion that they, let's hear the next, this one application, and see whether or not we issue one permit to the applicant. Setting the, keeping the cap at 82 does not mean that necessarily anybody who's applying for that one permit or more than one permit is entitled to get that permit. So in June, staff presented a staff report, again, based on our original recommendation that we didn't think there is need for additional taxi service in Glendale, or even one permit for one operator, from our standpoint, practically doesn't provide a service that one cap can provide, a demand or a need in Glendale. We recommended against the one permit, issuance of one permit. Commission, after deliberation, careful consideration of all the information, also denied the permit. It was a split vote of three commissioners voting against the application, denying the application. Two commissioners felt that one, providing one permit gives another company a chance to operate in the city of Glendale. Since then, the applicant, UITD, has appealed the commission decision, felt that just because we allowed the cap to stay at 82, that one permit now is available for another operator, including themselves, so they should have received a permit because they're a qualified operator. We have checked the background of UITD. It's a qualified operator. They operate in various jurisdictions. And however, again, we felt that it wasn't necessary to add one more cap company or one more permit to the existing operations in Glendale. Commission voted that way as well. So you have three motions that are here to be considered by the city council to set a hearing. They to actually hear this or send it back to the commission for consideration, or deny, essentially, that this thing be heard again in the future by the city council or the commission. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bagnanian was pretty clear, but let's hear from the city attorney, what our choices are, what we'll be hearing and deciding tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council and for members of the public who are here, tonight, the matter before you is a request that the council grant an appeal hearing on the matter of the denial of a taxi cab permit for United Taxi, Southwest, Inc., DBA, United Taxi of Glendale. It is not to entertain the merits of the hearing. Under 2.88 of our municipal code, the question is whether or not there is issues of sufficient substantiality to warrant the council granting a hearing. And so sometimes there's some overlap, where in order to assess whether or not there's issues of sufficient substantiality, you will, someone will want to present the merits of their case. This council should just keep in mind that we're really not here to hear the merits. It's to determine whether or not a hearing can be granted. Hence, the reason why you have three motions. One is to essentially deny the matter without a hearing, in which case the decision of the TPC will become final. Grant a public hearing, and in the future, a date will be set for that hearing, at which time the merits can be considered. Or thirdly, if there is new and material evidence that could not have been produced at the hearing of the TPC but is now available, and you could remand it back to the TPC for consideration of that new and material evidence. If you have any questions on the process or procedure, I'd be happy to respond.
Ms. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. I just want to be sure that I understand this. So in other words, we're not to think about whether or not we agree with the decision of the TCP. We're only to think about whether or not there's either new evidence or something procedurally that was incorrect. Can you explain to me? I need a little more guidance about how to make this decision. Are there certain findings that we should make?
You certainly can consider the, in fact, you will, by necessity, consider the decision of the TPC. If you feel the TPC's decision was wrong, either it was an error factually, or there were errors in law as raised by the appellant, then you might want to consider granting a public hearing. Hearings under our code are essentially what we call limited de novo hearings, or hearings anew based upon, there should be written record, but new testimony, if you will. So you, by necessity, would be considering the decision of the TPC. But you wouldn't want to get into the full-blown merits of the case, the public inconvenience and necessity, for example, the quality of the vehicle or vehicles that would be the subject of a taxi cab permit or permits. None of those issues would be relevant at this point in time. It would be really the question of whether or not you found that there was anything in the decision rendered by the TPC or anything presented tonight. Again, there'll be some overlap with the merits, but trying to keep it only on what the TPC did wrong and why you should grant that hearing that you should be looking at.
So just so I'm clear, let's say that we think that the TCP had all of the correct information. They didn't do anything procedurally wrong, but we disagree with the decision that they made. Is that grounds to then grant a new hearing?
You could do that because you have the discretion to do that, but I would always note that you should be making your decision based upon some substantive reason to do it. It's, there were some, in the past, some councils just felt it was a matter of philosophy that they would grant a hearing, and there's nothing improper about that. But, and certainly you could do that if a majority felt that, just decided that because the council is the last stop in the process, we would like to grant a public hearing, you can certainly do that. You have the discretion to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Draymond.
Certainly, Mr. Howard, you're not saying that the sole grounds to grant a public hearing on this topic are because, or the only solid grounds to do that would be because of a belief that there was an error in the judgment of the TPC or that something was overlooked? Are you?
It could be a sole ground if you believe that there was an error in the TPC's decision.
I'm asking whether you are trying to tell us that those are the sole grounds.
Oh, no. Those are not the sole grounds.
Thank you.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right. Well, the way we normally hold hearings, whether in fact this is a hearing or not, we normally let the appellant come to the lectern. One person comes to the lectern, presents the case, then the, there is a presentation by the counterparty, and then finally, there is a rebuttal from the appellant. So that's what I would like to do tonight. I'd like to have one person who's going to represent the, and then there'll be one person at the counterargument, and then you would get to present the rebuttal. Now, in addition to that, I have speakers, speaker cards that will be allowed to also give their opinions and make their presentations. However, they're going to have a However, they're going to have a limited time. The appellant, whatever time you take, whether it's five minutes, eight, or 10, then the counterparty will also have that same amount of time. So I think I'm clear in terms of what the rules will be. What's your name, sir?
My name is Neil Evans. I'm an attorney for United Independent Taxi.
And you submitted a card.
I guess you have to take my card out, then.
Well, no, you know, I'll just, here you go. See your card, so any idea how long you think you'll be speaking?
Somewhere in the five to 10-minute range.
Okay, well, whatever the city clerk is going to note the time, and then the counterparty will be given the same amount of time, and then you'll get a chance to rebut. Okay, Mr. Clark, you ready to?
Thank you, Neil Evans. I've appeared before you in the past, some years ago. I've been the attorney for United Independent Taxi for 22 years, so I have a lot of background to draw upon in terms of dealing with the regulations, getting into cities, maintaining their position in cities. United Independent--
Could you just state your name for the record?
I thought I did. Neil Evans.
Thank you. Just, thank you.
United Independent Taxi has approximately 400 and some odd cabs in the city of Los Angeles as a franchise, in the city of Los Angeles for the last, well, since 1977. They have been in your city for, I think it was from 1977 to 1996. So they have a lot of experience, and they still have a good reputation and name in the city of Glendale. They have recently been able to get into Burbank, and that was because they were the only applicant for a given allotment of 60 cabs. And they have done wonderfully in Burbank, and have done some very unique and innovative things in terms of presenting green cabs, where 100% green cab fleet, which is really the first 100% green cab fleet in this area. And they've done a wonderful job since July, it's been over a year, so it's, I think July of '07, they've been in Burbank, and they've done a wonderful job there. From the standpoint of what the TPC did, it was very interesting, because in, on May 4th of this year, the TPC heard extensive arguments, the same players were there, about whether or not we should keep your number at 82, rather than reduce it to 81. And it was fairly obvious to me, and I think the record will reflect the fact, that the reason why they ruled in favor of keeping that one permit is they wanted to keep the door open for a company to come in. We were the only applicant for the relevant period, and I'm trying to think, it may be that our application that's still being considered goes back to '07. And what we're seeing, and we saw this somewhat in Burbank as well, is that there's just a tremendous delay in getting things before the relevant administrative bodies, and it's not in the best interest of the public. So when we're talking about now, are we going to give this a hearing? Well, this matter has been pending. We were the only applicant, I believe it was in the July, August of '07, the only applicant for permits. Then we're here in, so that's been pending for almost two years. We're here in May, where we have a very lively discussion about the fact that we should keep this one permit because we want competition, and we want to consider our application. But then when we got down to the actual hearing on June 22nd about the application for one permit, there was a very lively discussion about the need for competition, and then the determination was made, well, we have this one permit, but we think maybe we don't want competition, or at least competition in this market, so we're going to say no. There is a very good reason why you should conduct a public hearing. Not because you want to hear the same arguments over and over and over, but as a practical matter, like in Burbank, we are the only applicant for a permit. There is nobody competing with us for this one permit. What's going on is the incumbent, or the company that says there's five companies that are competing for limited business, it's not five companies, it's one operator who runs a centralized dispatch and controls the entire operation, using five different advertised names, giving the perception to the public that there's competition, when in fact, there is no competition. It's one operator operating a fleet, a large fleet with different names. So it's, I think it's a deception on the public to say that there's competition when there's only one operator. We, on the other hand, want to compete in a real way, where we offer a very high-quality operation. No one's ever questioned the quality of our operation. Our competitors are not going to say we're a slot cab company, they're going to say, you know, they're a very reputable company, we just don't want the competition, we don't want the challenge to the limited business. So why should you let this go to a hearing? Because you have one applicant for one permit, and we think, as a matter of law, that you have an obligation, since you ruled on May 4th that there is a need for this one cab, you have no competing application for this one permit, and you have a company that cannot be challenged based on its qualifications. It cannot be challenged based upon our application. We are a top-flight cab company that provides fantastic service to the public. We have been acknowledged in terms of our ability to provide service in many, many jurisdictions, dealing with over a million customers a year, with a complaint record of .00001%, and we can't get one permit in the city of Glendale. So we think that there's a legal problem here, that you can't say, we need 82 cabs, and leaving one left over because the other operator has the other 81, and say, well, we're not going to give it to you. I think what's going on is that, whether it's the perception that there's not enough cab business to go around, or that jobs are going to be taken because there's going to be another one cab on the road that's going to compete, what we're trying to do is create real competition, not an operator with five different color schemes that's selling the public that, you know, will use Checker Cab, or use Yellow Cab, when it's all one operation, one operator. We're offering a completely new cab company, that people have name recognition throughout Southern California, that people are being picked up at LAX and Burbank, and can't, or taken to Glendale, but can't be picked up in Glendale. That makes no sense. So the other question is why just grant a hearing for one permit? I think it's the principle of it, that you have an applicant with no competition, with a statement that you still need this extra cab, and they're saying, well, do we want competition, or not want competition? That's really what we think the City Council should decide. Do you want competition, real competition, and are you going to open the door to another cab company to prove itself again, realizing it's only one cab? But nevertheless, it is competition, it is a completely new operator that's coming into the city, that you haven't had since 1996. So are you going to allow that to go forward? It's difficult to draw the line here as to what's on the merits, and what's the reason for the hearing, but I think the TPC said, we need the permit, and then they didn't exercise the discretion. I think it's now in the best interest of the public for the City Council to actually make a determination. Are we going to let one company that runs five different color schemes be the competition, and fight within themselves for the available business? Are we going to really let a new company come in that is a quality company, that's going to give the public a real alternative? So that's why we think you should allow the hearing, is give the public a real alternative, or at least have a hearing to consider whether that's a good idea. By the way, the economy is kind of turning around, and so this doom and gloom about not wanting to put this extra cab on the road, I think is losing a lot of steam, and I would hope that you'll give us that opportunity to have a public hearing, where some of the same issues will be addressed, but there will hopefully be some new issues that we can convince you why we should be allowed into the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, how long was that?
Approximately seven minutes.
Approximately seven minutes, okay. Who will be representing the other cab companies, or someone?
And there may not be a specific representative, I think they're referring, so there is.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, there will be more than one. I'll take, hopefully, down to three and a half, and leave three and a half for Mr. Baker. My name is John Yantis. I am in the city of Glendale, and I represent GNS Transit and Tri-City Transportation, two different operators. You know, the, do we need a hearing? You know, nothing new is being presented here. The TPC had at its June meeting a list of items that they were to consider for public convenience and necessity, and indeed, they did consider them. Mr. Baker will go over those items for you. Mr. Evans and I have been going at this for many years, and we hear the same thing about competition. Many of you know the taxi business, some of you don't. There is competition, because each driver owns his or her own taxi. They compete amongst each other. Now, if there's business, everybody's happy, but when the business is contracting, then we have a problem. And this is what was presented to the TPC, and what they adopted. Is there new business? Mayor Quintero and Councilmember Weaver know that two weeks ago, three weeks ago at their meeting, the airport is down 20%. That's a major source of business that comes from the city of Glendale. This was presented, nothing new here, there's nothing new to add, there's nothing, no new evidence. The drivers we have here, again, for the most part, large part, residents of the city of Glendale. Mr. Neil Evans comes up and says, you know, we need to have competition, and we need to open the door. Your job here, ladies and gentlemen, is to consider the citizens of Glendale. This is a mandate from the state of California, and the government code, you are mandated to regulate taxicab service for the public safety and welfare of the citizens. It's not for the public safety and welfare of United Taxi, or even GNS Transit and Tri-City. We are here to serve the public, you're here to serve the public. And have we served the public? You've heard it all, it's in your report, and it is a part of your report, that indeed, we've not had any major complaints, and those little ones have been addressed. They want to bring one taxi, let's be clear about this, one taxi. You're going to have a hearing on whether or not you have one taxi. Now the question becomes, a call is placed to this taxi company from Chevy Chase Canyon, and then we have a call coming from Northwest Glendale. Is that call going to, if there's somebody in Chevy Chase Canyon, are they going to be able to be over in Northwest Glendale to activate, in a responsive time, similar to what we have? This is not, this can't happen. It just physically and fiscally cannot happen. And who suffers? Is it United? No. Is it the people of Glendale? Yes. And is it the taxicab service that you're mandated to regulate? And the answer is, yes, it is. We submit that there's nothing new that's been presented, nothing in the staff report, the staff has vetted this out, they've recommended that there be no hearing, and we would submit, ladies and gentlemen, that a further hearing is not going to bring out. This, the taxicab business, this is nothing new, the issues are the same. The key question here is, will you see any new evidence? Is there anything substantial offered? And we submit not. I think I've used three and a half minutes, Mr. Mayor, and I would leave three and a half minutes for Mr. Baker. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, if I could, hand you this to hand out to the council members. I'm Sheldon Baker, and I'm the attorney for San Gabriel Transit, one of your existing operators. My client agrees with the staff report, and we urge you to deny the application without a hearing. Glendale Municipal Code, Section 5.84.100, requires that United, the appellant here tonight, prove, and I quote, "by a preponderance of the evidence," that public convenience and necessity requires the operation of the vehicle listed in the permit application. What you're being given is what was, it's actually included in your report, but that is an excerpt from the staff report to the Transportation Parking Commission for their meeting of June 22, when they decided that the applicant failed to carry the burden of proof. And I'd call to your attention that there's a chart, Table A, that's the elements that United must present in order to satisfy the Glendale Municipal Code. That's what public need and necessity is about. One column is what the current operators are doing, the other column is what United does. Ability of the current operators to perform the service, currently meeting the needs, not applicable as to United, because they're not providing service here. Effective multiple service providers, the current people meet those needs. But look at what they said. "One taxi will not provide the level of competition that can be realized from having multiple taxi companies." Growth and development in Glendale, the operators are meeting those needs. But the report says, "Not enough economic growth and development to warrant additional taxi service." Mr. Gannis indicated about the airport. This was written after Americana was built and in its present state. It didn't add to the demand. The scope of the service, operators are currently meeting that scope. Applicant would not provide any new scope of service. Reliability of the applicant's equipment, the current people are meeting the needs, the applicant would meet those needs. Ability to provide efficient service, the existing operators are meeting those needs. Very few complaints. If one taxicab, and this is interesting what the staff said, if one cab is granted, it may not be cost-efficient for the applicant, thus potentially compromising service delivery to the patrons of the city. As Mr. Gannis pointed out, the one cab may be in the wrong place at the wrong time, and guess who suffers? The person wanting to have the cab. They may be sitting there and finally give up. That reflects on all the companies. It's not what is desirable. The ability to handle current demand for service, the current people are doing that. Additional demand for services is not there. Complaints against the current operators, insignificant. The same holds true for the applicant in the cities it now serves. Innovative proposals, the current operators, service, special need passengers with existing fleets, City Cab has already invested in hybrid taxicab technologies. The applicant has hybrid and CNG autos, cabs in their fleet. These are the issues that you'd hear. There was no dispute about these issues, none. I don't know what would be new. We urge you to deny the request without a hearing. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll, go ahead, Mr. Evans, you can rebut, and then we'll hear from the--
High Street, on behalf of People's Taxi, sir.
Oh, well, you'll have to--
I did fill out a card that's in your hand.
Okay, well, have a seat, you'll be hearing from you in a minute.
Do you want to save rebuttal to the very end, Mr. Mayor?
We can save rebuttal to the--
It's up to you, Mr. Evans.
I would prefer that.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll go to the speaker cards, and we'll give the speakers four minutes. We'll start with Chris, Chrisman.
Didn't mean to speak out of turn. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and distinguished councilmen. I'm not going to do a retread and go repeat everything that just got spoken, but I do want to make anyone very, very clear--
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Chris Chrisman, 1175 East Green Street, Pasadena. I represent People's Taxi, and I have heard again, and again, and again tonight, my esteemed colleague, Neil Evans, dismiss our existence, or that we are something affiliated with or connected to GNS Transit Tri-City. People's Taxi is Gorgi Enterprises Incorporated. We own the company, I manage the company, we exist, and we run 29 cabs in this city. I'm getting really quite insulted that every time Mr. Evans comes to the podium, we are dismissed out of hand as being something other than what we really are. We are Gorgi Enterprises, we are People's Taxi. But there isn't just one operator in this city, there's People's Taxi, and it's 29 cabs, almost 38% of the fleet in this city. We're driving, and for our lives, to survive a contracted economy. I expressly ask you to at least recognize that we are People's Taxi, we're licensed here, and we'd like to continue to. Beyond that, our performance is above 90%, on time. We've earned the right to be here, and I think we've earned the right to be recognized as a separate operator in the city. I hope that you will deny this, this application or applicant serving for appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aram Sahakian, followed by Francine O'Sheen.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, good evening. Name is Aram Sahakian. The reason I'm here tonight is to clarify a couple of issues stated in Mrs. O'Sheen's letter, and I also want to ensure that you have a copy of my email that I sent to Mr. Magdanyan. And may I pass this to you? In response to Mrs. O'Sheen questioning basically statements I made during my meeting. I'm not going to go into the details--
You might as well identify yourself as, well, I know your name, but--
I'm also a transportation commissioner. I'm not going to go into the details of, of my resume, you can read it for yourself. But there are a couple of statements that I would like to address, and I'm sure you received Mrs. O'Sheen's letter, and you probably already read it. Number one is, the letter clearly states that I'm not, I wasn't the city administrator for taxi cabs in the city of Los Angeles, nor the assistant administrator. I never stated I was the administrator or the assistant administrator. My statement was very clear. I was a transportation engineer in the Franchise Regulations Division, regulating the taxi cab industry, and I stand by that. Now, when Mrs. O'Sheen contacted the Personnel Department, City of Los Angeles, they contacted me and they told me that they will not give her any information, all they do is tell her how many years I worked with the city. I pleaded to them to do, to give her the information, unfortunately, they refused to do so. All they had to do is contact me, and I would have given them the information that's in front of you. That's number one. Number two, my resume that I submitted to the city of Glendale to become a commissioner didn't state that I was in the Franchise Regulation Division, I had any experience in the taxi cab industry. I had less than 24-hour notice when I was advised that the position was available and to apply for it. I apologize if I didn't tailor my resume to reflect that, but I do recall very clearly at the time I was interviewed with Mr. Councilman Manukyan and Councilman Quintero, and I don't expect you to recall this, but I did discuss my franchise regulations experience. Now, my decision was based on proof of need and necessity. It is as simple as that. Do I believe one taxi cab will, will introduce competition? That's ridiculous, absolutely not. I also don't believe that one taxi cab will impact the existing operators in the city. That's also ridiculous. That's not going to happen. But there was no proof and necessity. It was .0001 percent, as stated earlier. My decision was based on that. Now, having said all this, I don't want Mrs. O'Sheen's letter to reflect on UITD, because it is a reputable company. I'll be in the chambers if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sahakian.
Thank you.
Francine O'Sheen, followed by Malisi Adamu.
Good evening, council members, I'm Francine Ocean, I'm a consultant for United Taxi, and I'm here tonight to act, to urge you to act in a transparent manner and approve the appeal by United Taxi for the one available taxi permit. There cannot be any legal or factual justification to deny this appeal for the single permit that the commission agreed to in 2000, in May 2009, because as you heard, there is no competing application. In essence, they gave the permit, and then they took it back. This is not a PCNN issue, that, that was resolved already when the taxi company that I represent asked for more than one taxi. But they are willing to have this. United wants to provide service to the Glendale residents in the most excellent way as they do in the city of LA. All the economic indicators that I have looked at and that you're hearing lately say that the economy is about to rebound. That means there could be a need for more taxis. It means increased business at the Americana on brand. It means more business at the airport, and we don't want to be heading back from the airport. We drop people from the airports into Glendale all the time. We pick up, we drop people at the Americana on brand, and we have to deadhead back. We have people who are waiting there for a cab, and we say, "We can't serve you." We don't want, when people call us, to have to refuse service to people in Glendale. I want to show you something. This is the San Fernando Valley Business Journal, this is the Americana on brand. Sales begin to pick up for project in Glendale. This is a whole article about how Rick Caruso's project is improving. And I can tell you, when the PCNN issue came up the first time, and I was there, I picked up the phone and called Rick Caruso. I used to work at the city of LA and the city council staff, and I know Rick Caruso quite well. One of the issues was the Excelsior condos, that there had been no calls from the Excelsior. Well, the fact is, there wasn't one single apartment or condo occupied at the time. I don't think they had their certificate of occupancy, so logically, you couldn't have any business calling from the Excelsior. But I do think the economy is changing, and we would like to serve you, even though we don't have an ability to have more than one cab. If you send this back to the TPC, you're going to be giving up just another dog and pony show if you have this hearing. City Cab and San Gabriel Transit will play out the same charade they played the last time. They'll bring dozens of drivers down who will swear that their families will starve if one permit is allowed. They'll tell you that competition is between their drivers, they don't need more. They'll find some veteran who will swear that they had some charitable act by City Cab, and that it compels you to continue their monopoly. Then they'll tell you all their drivers live in Glendale, when the fact is, they told the Burbank City Council all their drivers lived in Burbank. I mean, we could play the same game, we could, we could deliver sob stories, we can bring dozens of our drivers, many dozens of whom live in Glendale. And we can parade out children and wives who say this one permit will, will give them sustenance, will take care of them, we could bring out the elderly and the disabled. We don't want to be involved in another farce, and that's what, what we're going to wind up with. You have the justification, I believe, not just to grant the hearing, but to grant this permit, without another paranoid staged City Cab production. City Cab hasn't mentioned to you their failed attempt to try to sell their company a few months ago to Tech Trans, and how fearful they were that if they don't have this show of how many cabs and how much power they have, that their bottom line on the sale would fall through. That's gone anyway now, but who knows? I think they're still trying to sell it. No matter what you look at, this is a politically motivated action. As I said, I worked in the city council of Los Angeles years enough to know how these things work. I urge you to support the appeal by United. If you send this back to the TPC, knowing there was no competing application, it can only be for one reason, and, and I think you're setting yourself up for a lawsuit, I'm going to be done in a second. Any action beyond this appeal is not in the interest of good government, it's not transparent, and frankly, folks, I don't think it passes the smell test. Do not undermine the public's trust in local government. Please grant this appeal. Thank you.
Okay, I have a, someone else has turned in a card, is there anyone else that wishes to speak? All right, this will be the, I'm not taking any more cards. Okay, Malisi Adamu, followed by, I can't quite read the name, I believe it's Martin Shatuckian. Martin Shatuckian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Malissa Adamu, president of United Independent Taxi and United Taxi of the Southwest. I will give you this 2007 anniversary, we celebrated our 30th anniversary, and we start servicing the communities all over the county of Los Angeles, where I've been serving more than, more than 11 cities, starting from Burbank, Hollywood, Lancaster, Santa Clarita, Palmdale, Calver City, Santa Monica, South Bay, and incorporated city of, county of Los Angeles, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Palos Verdes, all those areas we are serving, and also, we're ready to serve in the coming few months in the city of Pasadena. We started in 1977 with 100 vehicles, and now we have almost like 505 vehicles, owner operators, it is non-profit association, we give vouchers to mothers, Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, Kids First program, we sponsor a lot of community works, like Cancer Society and so on, we sponsor, you can check City of Los Angeles, you can check City of Burbank, you can check on San Fernando Valley. We give vouchers to the Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, so that people who are staying in the bars will be transported without paying anything. And also, we do Kids First, we do programs for Kids First, we take pictures, fingerprints, young children who are going to elementary school and so on in every city, every communities. These are also the supporting documents that we get from the community, from the community of Glendale, that they were support in servicing the city of Glendale. We requested 70 vehicles to serve Glendale. Because of the economy, we said, whatever we get, we will serve. Right now, we have given to the, to the Transportation Department, we're getting almost 149 calls monthly, and we're transferring it to City Cab or People's Taxi every, every month. And that record we have given to the department. So what we want is, we just wanted to get even a single license, one license to serve City of Glendale, and we wanted to be part of the community, that's what we want. We have been in this community since, up to 1996. Once we sold the Tri City, we have been out because we have some problems with getting the seals that we had. So we're asking you to grant our, like, one license for United Taxi of the Southwest, DVA, United Taxi of Glendale, and we want you to give us this license. The other thing that we come to the city council is because the, sent the, on the record, the, I, I want you to put this CD on seven, I want you to listen how the Transportation Committee handled the case. The gentleman who came as a Transportation Committee, he has never worked as a taxi division regulation. I have never known him, and nobody knows where he was working. We asked the Transport, the Department of Transportation, City of Los Angeles, we are still pending with a legal matter with them, because we wanted to get exactly what he was doing. He has never worked in Department of Transportation, Taxi Division, Regulation Division at all. That's what they said, that's what they are going to give us a paper. In addition to that, when he applied to City of Glendale to be a transport, to be a committee, a commissioner, he has never mentioned that duty on the paper. That means this is not absolutely correct, and I, I thank you, this is number seven.
Okay, um, no, you're not going, Mr. Evans, if he wants to use that, he can use that, but your time is...
Okay, I'll give to Mr. ...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So get it set up, Mr. Clerk, if Mr. Evans wants to talk about that, he can do it in his rebuttal. Okay, the final speaker card is, I'm not sure if it's Martin. Just give your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members, my name is Martin Shatuckian. I'm a general manager of GNS Transit City Cab, and also Tri City Transportation Systems, DVA, Yellow Cab and Checker Cab. I'm also president of San Gabriel Transit, DVA City Cab, this company operates in the city of Los Angeles. Combined, I'm managing about 360 taxi cabs. I'm also general manager of dispatch company which dispatch super, shuttle, shuttles and taxi cabs from Burbank Airport. I want to go one by one over the points which were mentioned about, from our applicants. Number one, we are not intended, and we are not in the process, and we are not going to sell any of our taxi cab companies, none of them. Not City Cab, not Checker Cab, not Yellow Cab, not San Gabriel Transit Bell Cab. We're not, because it was a statement made that we are trying to sell them. We're not trying to sell them, and we are not running the show here. We are running the business, and we're providing public service to Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena residents, and also in City of Los Angeles. So that statement about our intention to sell any of our taxi cab companies is completely false, and it's misleading, and it's misinforming this honorable council, and it's an insult. Number two, about our Glendale drivers living in, in Glendale, yes, they are. And our Burbank drivers are living in Burbank, yes, they are. Look, they're local residents. And our Pasadena drivers live in Pasadena, there is nothing wrong with that. People trying to find a work close to their living place, and that's reasonable, and that's logic. And there is nothing to blame us for saying that, yes, our Glendale taxi cab drivers live in Glendale. That's true, and I'm going to say it over and over in front of any forum, there is nothing wrong with that. Now, about business in Glendale, and economy is supposed to turn around shortly after, that's absolutely wrong. That's, that's false information as well. Our economy, we are hoping all, and I'm sure that this country has so much potential to turn this, the economy around, and eventually, we will get out of this crisis. Absolutely, yes, I deeply believe in it, and I deeply believe in the potential of this country. It will happen, but it's not happening yet. We're not there yet. When it comes to taxi cab business in City of Glendale, we're still down about 25 percent compared to two years ago. When it comes to Burbank Airport, we're down 25 percent compared to two years ago. When it comes to City of Burbank and City of Pasadena, we're down to 25 percent compared to two years ago. So when it comes to economy about to turn around, it's absolutely wrong, we're not there yet, maybe in other parts of the economy, not in taxi cab business. Okay? Now, about the statement that we are paranoid and making a statement that one, additional one taxi cab will make our drivers starve, is absolutely wrong. It's not going to make our drivers starve, because our drivers are starving now, they are starving now, as we speak. And adding, adding a vehicle, either, adding even one vehicle is going to just drive these people crazy, because it's insane, it's not logical. I mean, when you, when you don't have enough bread to share with your family members, you're not inviting a guest, or you're not, you're not bringing your relatives to participate. That's outrageous. Now, about the scare tactics, scare tactics, about having illegal murder, about having a situation here, we heard about, we heard about it from our city attorney, Mr. Scott Howard, and we are well educated to understand what is right and what is wrong, and I believe that applicant, applicant here is for defending their case about getting their one taxi cab, and not about training us or teaching us or educating us how, how this honorable council should act, and if this council has a legal issue or not.
Okay, sir.
Can I have last, 10 more seconds?
Make it 10 seconds.
10 seconds, even less. For information of this council, for last two months, I, as a manager of GNS Transit or Tri City Transportation Systems, did not come across to any referrals from United Independent Taxi from City of Burbank to my company. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Evans. What the others are going to... Go ahead.
Thank you. Neil Evans, on behalf of United Independent Taxi, one of my favorite things to talk about in life and in law is intellectual consistency and genuineness. When you have Mr. Crispin come up and complain that he doesn't like what I say at public hearings, well, the genuine part of that is that when we were arguing about the Burbank permits, he spoke on behalf of a completely different company, I think it was San Gabriel Transit or GNS at that time. So he's speaking on behalf of companies at, in the Burbank hearings, and now he's disclaiming that and saying, "Well, it's a different company." Well, there is one owner of all of these companies. And I also saw Mr. Crispin, I was representing a different cab company in San Bernardino. And San Bernardino, like your city, and I don't mean this with disrespect, but it's a fact, that you're a closed city when it comes to taxi cabs, meaning, nobody can just come in, you have to wait for some kind of an opening or opportunity. In San Bernardino, we were fighting about two cabs, Mr. Crispin spoke on behalf of one of the other companies that Mr. Martin Rosian owns, and was saying, "Oh, you can't let these two companies in." And we had a very lively discussion for four hours at a commission level, and then we went in front of the city council, like we're doing this time, and the city council said, "No, two cabs, we want competition." It's only two cabs, but we want competition. So it's about genuineness, it's about realizing that you really don't have competition now, you have one owner who maybe is able to manipulate different color schemes or names. You heard Mr. Shatuckian say, "We're not selling any of our four companies." Well, that's my point, it kind of proves my point. It's just one company, with different ways of kind of marketing itself, but one company. Now, there probably is competition between Checker and Bell and Yellow, but it's one company, one organizational structure that has one centralized way of doing business, one centralized way of dispatching, and an umbrella entity that owns it all. So it's genuineness. So we fought in San Bernardino over two cabs, and the city council ruled in favor of letting there be competition, there was, one of the attorneys that spoke on behalf of the incumbent said, "Well, they haven't presented anything new." Well, that is not, I disagree in some respect, but that is not the standard upon which the city council will decide whether to conduct a public hearing. You have the discretion to take a stand on behalf of the city and the population, and if you think that, that real competition, even though it's at this point only one cab, is something that you want to pursue, then you should conduct a public hearing. Competition has to start somewhere. You are a closed city, you only allow a certain number of cabs to be on the road. On May 4, the commission said, "We think public convenience and necessity warrants keeping 82." The concept that we were revisiting public convenience and necessity on June 22 is not a genuine comment, because it was... not a genuine comment because it was decided on May 4th that they needed, you wanted to maintain 82. We were looking for a lot more, but only 82. So that meant there's one cab available. You have one applicant for that one cab, no competition. I think you should seriously consider the benefits of competition. I think the point is that no one has said one bad thing about our company. No one has suggested that we're not competent to do the job. The question is whether it's within the discretion of the city council and the city council wants to protect and use that discretion to allow you guys to consider this at a public hearing. I suspect the reality is that there's nothing new that necessarily we're going to present at the next hearing and that's why we hope that maybe there's something that can be done, subject to the city attorney allowing you to proceed. But this is an application that's been pending for, I think, two years now. And I think it's about time to do something forward thinking, rather than getting into these back and forth between these various companies saying, we're starving. Well, maybe you're starving because you're not innovative. Maybe you're starving because you've been competing within yourselves too much and you need some outside competition to stimulate things. And I think that's the point. I think the city council should encourage stimulation in this, even in this economy. And remember, the decision of the commission was three to two. So there were two commissioners who really wanted competition and maybe those two commissioners are kind of crying out to you guys to consider that seriously, whether competition, real competition, is what you should have, rather than the fake or faux competition that's being presented to you. Thank you.
All right, that'll close the public hearing portion.
So the record's clear, it's not a public hearing.
Right. Public comment portion. Okay, I'm ready to take comments or questions. Mr. Weaver.
I'll make my comments. I was pretty clear on what I was going to do before this morning. My comments now twofold. One, on things that don't apply at all to what we're here for, and the other to the fact, we're not, we didn't have a public hearing today. We're considering whether we should have a public hearing. Did we find fault with what the commission did? Is that pretty much accurate, Mr. Howard?
Essentially. And the standard is whether there's sufficient substantiality to warrant the grant of a hearing.
Yes. This morning changed everything for me. I received this, as we all did, this letter from Ms. Ocean. Interesting, it was sent to the five council members, to the LA Times, to the Glendale News Press, to the Daily News, and not one single person on the city staff. Keeping them in the dark. And I resent that. I got a copy to Mrs. Sahakian, I got a copy to Mr. Starbuck, I got a copy to the legal department and out to transportation, et cetera. What kind of game is being played when you give it only to the council people and try to blindside the staff? I really am upset with this. And then I read about, well, today, gee, everybody's telling the truth. No, some people are lying in here or both sides are lying. I don't know what it is. But I do know, in here, it's saying that Mr. Sahakian has given false and misleading claims. As a licensed civil engineer, like I am and like he is, there's a professional code of conduct. We can be disciplined if we are giving false information based on the jobs we hold in this state. I happen to believe him. For you all to go there and try to get into his records, try and destroy him, and then to say that he persuaded one of the other commissioners to go his way, well, I can't tell you how many times I've sat here and been persuaded by my call at least to change my position. That's what we do as a body. So to say that that is a reason, no. I don't agree. And then to call the tax administrator and everybody else, that's too much. Then I get down here to one of my favorite comments, which is obvious, and I understand the loyalty some of you council members have to San Gabriel Transit because it has been supportive of your elections. But this is not the time to thwart the best interests of the public as political payback. Do not undermine the public trust in their local government. So the inference is that some of us have been getting money from San Gabriel Transit and now we're paying back the favor. You don't know how many times I've sat up here in 13 years and have this crap thrown at me, that I'm being influenced. This is not the City of Los Angeles. This is Glendale and we operate totally different in Los Angeles. And the people that have worked in the City of LA better understand Glendale is different. And then threaten a lawsuit, a very long and costly lawsuit to get one taxi in here. Give me a break. Everybody in town sues the City of Glendale, one way or another, at another time. Now, on the merits of why we're here tonight, I've looked at the report of the commission, listened to the tape, and I think the commission acted legitimately. They heard it, they decided on a three-two vote. I don't know what more information they could have had to make a different finding. All this stuff that's thrown out here, oh, people losing their jobs, economy. I am the airport commission and we saw stats just Monday, 20% to 25% down. Our graphs show it's staying that way into the future. Okay? Into the future. The economy's not picking up. Our Class A commercial buildings in Glendale, the growth is down, we have a 20% vacancy rate in Glendale. It's gone up to 20%. I don't see it turning around anytime soon. Small businesses can't get loans. Nope, the banks aren't making loans. Nothing is being built, nothing is changing. I can't, I can't believe some of the stuff I've heard here tonight about the woes and stuff. There's too much garbage thrown out here tonight. But on the merits of what the commission did, I think they acted as the commissioners that we appointed on there to do a job. There's nothing left that they could further find out, other than to hear the same stuff again that we've heard here before. Oh, that one slot, we need it, we deserve it, there's a legal right to it. I don't believe it. There's no legal right. But the second I started going this drift, I'm now getting into the hearing. So I'll cut it off right there. I see no need for a hearing. I'll move to deny. Thank you.
Okay, any other...
Well, I've, I have, because I've known you ITD for several years in several different capacities, so I have nothing against the way they operate, nothing against their management or their service. But the issue at hand here is whether the decision and the deliberations made by the TPC warrant further review. I used to be on the TPC and I've been through these taxi wars before. And this is nothing, folks. You should see how, I mean, it used to get pretty exciting. I think, I think we've all, many of the involved in this have seen that. So, I mean, I'd like, actually, I'd like to commend the parties for keeping their comments pretty much to the point. But I just don't see, and I looked at the TPC transcript, I read their transcript, I viewed the deliberations on the restreaming, live streaming on the computer, on the internet, and I just don't see any, any error. They, they did their homework, they listened to the testimony, everyone had a chance to speak. So I can't, I can't say that they made an error. But one thing I do feel that we need to make a stand on as a, as a council, is to strongly dissuade attacks on our commissioners, ad hominem attacks, attacks on their credibility, attacks on their work history. These commissioners volunteer their time, they do the best they can, they spend evenings away from their family, and to, to research their background and to split hairs as to whether or not they were in the licensing division or the analysis division of the LA Department of Transportation is not fair. We don't want to scare applicants away to our commission. So Mr. Sahakian, I, I'm glad you came forward. I know you have, you've served several years. In fact, we don't always agree. Before I was on council, I was representing someone before commission and I was turned down and I may have said a few words under my breath, but I didn't write a letter to the LA Times or to the Daily News. I know you and the other commissioners on that commission and all our commissions do their best and I just want to give you a vote of moral support, that you do your best, keep at it, you and everyone else. And UITD is just not the right circumstances to grant the appeal at this point.
Mr. Friedman?
I have some questions. And they may not be material, but I like to kind of be able to wrap my mind around things. I don't like to have unanswered questions. So I have some questions for staff and some for actually both parties. Before that, I'll say that I used to live in New York City and I think the first time I've understood that the way that taxicabs in New York City operate on the street maybe filters up or down somehow through management structure, but I'm glad that this is my first taxi wars. For staff, just again, this may not be material, but I like to have some less unanswered questions. How many companies are we dealing with here in terms of the companies that are currently working in Glendale?
I'll go to Mr. Bagdani and he can answer the question.
Or owners.
Councilman Friedman, there are five companies that are listed that are currently own permits in Glendale and those companies are Bell Cab, City Cab, San Gabriel Transit, I'm sorry, Checker Cab, Bell Cab, Checker Cab, City Cab Company, People's Taxi and Yellow Cab.
Are they all under the umbrella of one owner or one...
They have corporations that are co-owning two of the companies. The GNS is one of them and Tri-City Transit is another one and the third one is Gorgi. So they have three. And as far as their incorporation, their shareholders, we don't know exactly the combinations of what shares who's owned by. Mr. Marjorie Rosian, who has been, who's had ownership of these companies, have been a steady owner of two of these companies, to the best of my knowledge. But in general, People Taxi has always been separate, has had separate ownership from the other four. Essentially, these two companies, two of the GNS and Tri-City, have, they're doing business as four, under four different cab company names, and People Taxi has a separate ownership.
Okay, thank you. And I, thanks. And I have two questions for the appellate and then one for the other side. I'm not even sure how to refer to them. Can you come back up please, whichever representative? My first question is, if you were to go back to the TCP, to the Transportation Commission, would you be basically pleading the same case or do you feel that you have different evidence or new evidence to present to them?
Well, in terms of evidence, I think the point we would make, and I don't, I think it would be kind of on deaf ears, but the point we would make is, you ruled on May 4th that you needed this one permit as part of public convenience and necessity and then you denied us that one permit when we're the only applicant. As a practical matter, how can you justify those two actions? One says, we need it and we're looking forward to your application. The other one says, we don't need it.
I guess my question...
If there's only one permit available, then there's one permit available and you should award it.
Okay, so my question to you is, are you basically trying to convince them using, of the same case that you made before, or do you feel that they had either inaccurate information or they didn't have all of the evidence that you would want to give them?
I don't think they can, they properly considered all the evidence they had. We would be able to submit additional information since that hearing, since June, showing that we're continuing to be in demand, but we can't service the citizens of the City of Glendale. We continue to get hundreds of calls that we can't service.
Okay.
So that would be continuing information. But the basic theory in what you heard tonight is, as I interpreted the TPC saying, what difference is one cab going to make?
Okay, and my other question is more of a practical one and it's about the deadheading, I think it was called?
Yes.
So explain to me how this works. So you have, and again, I'm not trying to get into, you know, into that, but I just want to understand this. So you have a cab, you have your one cab that has its one permit to come to Glendale. So you're at, let's say, LAX and someone says, I'm going to Glendale and you want that cab to be able to then come back maybe with a fare from Glendale. So you, how do you find that one cab that has that one permit to send them?
The one cab would be a cab that would operate in Glendale that would not be picking up at LAX. It might drop off at LAX if you pick up someone in Glendale. We have 505 or somewhat cabs. There's 300 and something cabs that are licensed in the City of Los Angeles under a franchise. We have 20 cabs that are licensed in Burbank and those have to be dedicated 100% to the City of Burbank. They just work in there. So the one cab that we would have would obviously, or realistically or practically, just be serving the City of Glendale. And admittedly, it would be working pretty hard because we get a lot of demand, but what it couldn't serve, we would be referring to the other companies that are here, as we do now.
So that one cab, let's say they go to LAX, could they then pick a fare up at LAX and bring them back?
No. You can only pick up where you're licensed to pick up.
And are most cabs only licensed in one city?
Well, some of the cabs that are licensed in the City of Los Angeles that go out all these different areas have multiple licenses. It would not be feasible or practical and we would accept a condition limiting this one cab just to the City of Glendale. It would not be picking up in any other jurisdiction. It would be dropping off wherever a Glendale resident wanted or a visitor to Glendale wanted, but it would have to come back to the City of Glendale and pick up where it's legally authorized to operate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then just one question for the other side. And I'm sorry that this is maybe taking longer than everyone wanted. And that question is, so your cabs that are operating here, do they only have Glendale licenses, most of them, or do some of them also have licenses in other cities?
Only Glendale.
Okay, that's the only question. Thank you. So, I'm not, I'll tell you where I'm at right now, which is I'm trying to separate two issues. And one is whether I agree with, there's two separate issues in my mind. One is whether I agree with the decision that the TCP made. And the other issue is whether I think that, whether or not I agree with it, we should have a new hearing. And just for the record, for everyone who's involved in this, I was elected a few months back and before that I had never met any of you, I don't believe. Well, I had met a few people who were representing, but not the owners of these various cab companies. I don't feel that I, I don't feel that I have an obligation to one side or the other. I've met both of you. You've both been brought in since I was elected. I heard your side. I think that there's compelling arguments to be made on both sides. That's the difficulty that I have. I hope that whatever decision that I make, that we can move forward, you know, and hopefully do business with whatever the losing side is in the future. And I hope it doesn't keep either one of you from wanting to come to Glendale. My, and this is the dilemma that I'm having, is I'm not sure that I agree with the original decision of the TCP, quite honestly. I think if I was sitting on that, I might have made a different decision. However, I'm not sure at this point that that's enough for me to ask for a new hearing because in general, I don't want people who go in front of our commissions to think that it's the first stop on the way up to an appeal on either side. I think that as a city council, we have to give the latitude of those decision-making bodies to make their decisions and that unless we feel that they either were biased or didn't have all the evidence or somehow procedurally misused the evidence, I tend to be in general reluctant to overturn those decisions. And that's something that I have said on other appeals as they've come in and something that I truly believe. They are decision-making bodies and just like a court, an appellate court of law, and I'm not a lawyer, so correct me if I'm wrong, an appellate court of law would want to see a procedural reason to overturn a lower court's decision, that tends to be the reason, not that they just disagree. So I kind of look at our decision-making in a lot of the same way. However, at this point, I'm still sort of wrestling with that. Having lived in New York City, I don't feel much sympathy to the argument that because there's this one cab, if someone calls them, they're going to be waiting for a half an hour. It doesn't work that way. I've used cabs quite a bit. I have a New York cab program... hour. It doesn't work that way. I've used cabs quite a bit. I have a New York cab programmed into my phone. When I call them and I say, "When can you get me a cab?" If they say, "15, 20 minutes," I say, "Thank you." And I call the next cab company. I mean, in practicality, for people that are calling cabs, that's how that works. So, I'm not really swayed by that argument. I don't believe that allowing one more cab in would really make much of a difference. So, I'm not swayed by that, which is the reason why I'm saying I'm not sure I agree with the original decision of TCP. I also tend to believe that more competition is better. So, I'm very sympathetic to the appellant in that regard. I think that we should allow, you know, whenever possible, competition. I think it helps consumers. But is that enough for me to want to have a new hearing? I'm not convinced. So, I'd like to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say. And I'm going to continue to think about this.
Friedman?
Well, very interesting argument and very interesting input from my colleagues on the council. I would like to just touch for a moment on what Mr. Weaver had to say, just one, one point. And since my colleague, Ms. Friedman, also mentioned it, I wasn't just elected, but recently enough, I don't really know any of you. I know some, I know Mr. Dantis. He is one of our commissioners, actually, in the city. I know Mr. Baker because he's a former mayor, a former council member. But the rest of the players in this room, I really don't know. I think there's one of you that I have met once in a brief meeting. And that's basically it. Certainly, I know that none of you are contributors to my campaign. So, I just want to rule that out just for starters, since that was put in print. Like Mr. Najarian, I've appeared before Traffic and Parking Commission, not as an attorney, though, with issues related to parking ordinances in the far north part of the city. And I think at that time, Mr. Sahakian was on that commission. Yes, he was. And I have to say, I don't always agree with what the TPC says, what their decision-making is. But it is their decision-making. And I would suspect that the members of the Traffic and Parking Commission, who are also Glendale residents, who tune in on Tuesday nights here, don't always agree with the decision-making of this, this body. I don't put any stock whatsoever in the issue that somehow because TPC members voted one way at one meeting and at another meeting voted another way, that there's some inherent conspiracy to be found in that. That happens here all the time. In fact, as an elected official and prior to that, as just a resident of the city and a community advocate, I find that a bit refreshing. Because it indicates to me that there is some intellectual interaction between the members of that commission. I also know the members of that commission well enough to know that though, I know that their views on public transportation don't always mesh perfectly. They are all honorable people. And I think that they all do a very, very difficult job and they do it well. On the other hand, I, I heard several comments tonight that I just found puzzling. First of all, we're being asked to suspend the idea of competition because business is bad, I suppose, is one of the themes coming forward. I don't think you do that. I think if you believe in capitalism, you don't say, "Well, we believe in capitalism. We believe in free market." Except when business is bad, then you throw it out the window and try to protect the players that are already in place. I'm not sure that I buy that. And I actually find it a little amusing. And so, I heard that being raised a number of times. I'd like to ask Mr. Evans to come up, because I have a question or two for Mr. Evans, you, you've heard this scenario about a canyon, your cab is over in, let's say Glen Oaks Canyon or Chevy Chase Canyon, who just picked up Mr. Weaver and are taking him to the city council meeting over in Glen Oaks Canyon. And then you get a call from, oh, let's say, I don't know, let's say you get a call from council member Draymond and he's in far north Glendale. How do you accommodate both of us? And how do I lose out if I call your company and I request a cab, but you're tied up with Mr. Weaver all the way across the city?
Well, we have that predicament now, except we can't provide a single cab. We get hundreds of calls a month from residents of the city of Glendale because we're so well-known and so out there. And our cabs are dropping off hundreds of people a day, maybe thousands of people a month in Glendale. We have that predicament now, where we're going to, we're getting calls that we can't serve. We, we didn't agree with the decision to limit the, a number of cabs to 82, but that's the reality that we have. So, all we can do is get our foot in the door. So, yes, we'll have one cab. And if there are competing demands for that one cab at the same time, one of the calls will not be able to be serviced. And we'll have to refer it the same way that we do now to another cab company.
Which is what?
Right now, we refer calls that we cannot serve. We get calls into our dispatch center, "Can you pick me up at the Americana, whatever?" We say, "Okay, but we're going to have to send a different cab company. Is that all right with you?"
And who would you typically refer it to?
I believe my client is-
What's the process for that, in other words?
At this point, it's People's Taxi. It's the, it's the cab company that we're referring to. So, as a practical matter with only one cab, just like a really good lawyer like me who gets calls of emergencies from two clients at the same time, can't be two places at once. So, it is a practical problem. But certainly, that one cab is going to do an excellent job with cab, with the orders it does have. It's just dispatch is going to have to say, "We're not available, but we have another cab company we can refer you to that will respond in this timeframe." But that's what we're doing now.
All right. Let me, thank you. You answered my question. Let me then ask you this. You just referred to People's Taxi?
Correct.
That's who you refer to, as you said, the company you refer to. But earlier, you were saying there's only one company. It's just a variety of, operating under a variety of colors. So, is it People's Cab that you're referring them to? Or is it San Gabriel Transit? Who, I mean, on the, see, what I guess I'm getting at and the sort of disingenuousness I'm picking up, actually on both sides here. On the one hand, we say, "We're not one company. We're four companies." And then a few minutes later, we say, "None of our companies are for sale."
Right.
I mean, I picked up on the same thing you did, you know, when we're speaking very passionately, suddenly, "Well, we are the same company, but we're not the same company." But you just did the same thing.
No. Mr. Marty Rosian owns all these companies. And we had this, a very similar discussion in Burbank, where he was called to the table and admitted, "Yes, I do own all these companies." He's very, you know, entrepreneurial, very capitalistic. Everybody would like to be in his position from an economic standpoint. But in terms of who we refer the calls to, I guess the least of the five evils in our perception is People Taxi. And that's the one that we refer calls to. But the fact that we refer calls to one of the five companies that Mr. Marty Rosian owns, I don't think changes the fact that there is one company, one person that owns all these companies, who may, you know, be able to say there are different color schemes, but it's really one company, one philosophy of business, and it's not competition. I hope that responds.
It does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to ask clarification from staff. Mr. Bagdani, why are we offering an additional permit? Why, in other words, from the city standpoint, from the city point of view, why would we offer one extra permit?
Councilman Draymond, our staff recommendation to the TPC when we first looked at the AD-2 cap was to take that one away. And so, commission looked at our recommendation. They received testimony from all the applicants, the new applicants versus the existing operator, but they decided to keep that one. So, we went to the next stage, which was in June, considered the UITD application based on the same evaluation that we did for whether we should keep that one or not. We recommended against the same application, again stating that we didn't think there was a, based on the need and necessity provision of the code, that there was enough demand for the additional one cap. We, in fact, said, "If we're going to make it, add another operator, we, in my opinion, from, again, dealing with taxi operations for the last 20 years, you need at least five to 10 cabs as a company to come in into any geographic area in order to have a legitimate operation so that you don't deal with that one cab getting called to one corner and not having, not being able to pick up."
Are you suggesting that you're going to make that suggestion?
I'm not making that suggestion at this point. I'm saying we, as part of the deliberation to the commission, we suggested if we're going to add one more, maybe we should consider either to increase the cap, or actually, if the claim by the existing operator is there is not enough business, then reduce that, the permits to all the other operators by a certain percentage, let's say 10%. And then if the business picks up, then we can increase the cap.
I'm sure they're going to love that idea.
So, that's, that was, you know, it can go both ways.
Then we'll be talking about the real Taxi Wars that Councilmember Najarian was talking about. All right. Well, thank you very much. And I think I've heard what I need to hear. I, I want to say, this has really been an eye-opener for me. This is, I guess I really shouldn't say what's on my mind. But in any case, I'll say this much. I, I, if it were, if I were sitting on the TPC, I think I would have probably voted differently, being very honest with you. I think I probably would have, differently than the majority, pardon, with all due respect. However, I think I've heard enough now to cut, to simply cut to the chase and say, "The deal is for me, the point that council member Friedman made a moment ago." I'm not sure that cutting through all of this water and oil that I'm hearing here tonight, that what I really want to do is give the notion to the public or to vendors that have contracts in our city, or those who want to, that our boards and commissions are merely a stopover point on the way to, to the next step. I don't think that's what we want to do here. As much as I've got to tell you, I disagree with the, with the vote that the Traffic and Parking Commission made. But I wasn't there myself. And I didn't get to hear that deliberation only, only on the, on the street livestream or the replayed stream. So, I'm going to, for now, side with our board and commission members, the majority of them. And I will vote to not move on to a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Well, for me, the issue tonight was whether there would be evidence presented to convince me that we needed to have a hearing or to remand the issue back to the TPC. And in the applicant or the appellant's presentation, I didn't hear anything that would cause me to, to remand it back to the TPC or to have us. So, that's where I'm at, just like Ms. Friedman, Mr. Draymond. Any other comments or motions?
Mr. Weaver?
I'll make a motion on 8B1. But one comment, I think it would be logical to assume if you're in Glendale and you want a taxi service, you would look in the Yellow Pages. And since our Yellow Pages cover more than just Glendale, I think it covers Glendale, Burbank, what are, most of them. It'd be just logical, you open it up and you could pick up United or any of them and call them, not knowing that, that could generate a number of calls to United. Seems logical. Anyway, I move 8B1.
Okay, do I have a second? That roll call. Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Eric Quintero?
Yes. So, Mayor, if we move on to the next item, the record should reflect all the written documents that were submitted this evening, the letter from OP, the submission by council member, or I'm sorry, by counselor Baker, the series of letters testing, I believe, they're testament to United Taxi Company's needs submitted by their president, as well as appears to be an email that has been typed, submitted by Commissioner Sahakian, as well as the brochure submitted by United Independent Taxi. It will all become part of the record.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Returning to the remainder of the calendar, 7 is adoption of ordinances. Now, 7A is ordinance amending chapter 13.36 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 to modify prohibited uses of water during water conservation. This was offered on October 20th, 2009 by council member Weaver.
Mayor would like to move 7A.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Hey, you have a question, Mr. Najarian?
I will second. But I have a question. I apologize, missing it. This is adopting the, basically loosening some of the restrictions on the use of the water. Is that correct? The, you can use a hand-
Exemptions.
I'm sorry?
Exemptions or exemptions?
Loosening the restrictions. So, you can water pots, you can-
Spot water lawn.
I'm sorry, a-
Spot water.
Spot water lawn, newly planted landscaping.
Right.
Vegetables.
But only one automobile per day.
The day.
Just kidding.
Najarian? The days of the week for certain parks-
You're good today.
-may be adjusted, but fit within the three. Have we, have we straightened out that watering schedule up at the Montrose Shopping Park?
Well, I don't know. I keep, I keep hearing that we have, but then I keep getting calls that we're watering on off days. I think, I think that's in a situation where the restrictions aren't necessarily fitting the type of watering features we have up there. So, they need to water more often in order to get out of water on them. But this doesn't address that necessarily.
Maybe we can jump ahead to, I know there was a letter from Carol Welling, where she, I guess, has been caught twice hand-watering and pointed to us in Montrose and saying, "You're watering every day. What are you doing to me?" So, this, this partially addresses the hand-watering issue. And-
But the hand-watering still has to be within the regulated hours. It can be on off days, but cannot be between 9:00 and 6:00 o'clock. So, if you're going to hand, well, because that's still a restriction on utilizing water during those hours. So, if you want to hand-water, do your-
Because of evaporate?
Yeah, yeah. So, you need to do it outside, you need to do it within the current hours for watering, although you can do it any day of the week. However, however, if you're washing your car during any hour and it happens to slip and put some water in the pot, then you're okay.
Okay. How is this related to the next item? I have, I mean, item 7C. Okay. Well, let me, let me just roll it up into one. As a result of this water restrictions, I have put some drought-tolerant landscaping near my, near my home, around the eaves, not in the front lawn area. And I pulled out the, what's that, the Impatience and those other things. And these drought-tolerant plants are doing great. I mean, you hardly have to water them. And they're just springing to life. And they're looking, they're looking very good. So, I just want to make that.
That's why they call them drought-tolerant.
Okay. And the other point is, and I fully support this, when are we going to be able to address the artificial turf issue? I know you were going to put some samples out so we could touch it and feel it and walk through it barefoot.
It's coming.
I hope it's always coming sooner than-
Yes. What, we actually have lined up the vendors and we have written the contracts. We're awaiting some insurance clearance on a couple of the vendors. And we haven't gotten those. As soon as we get those, we have even identified the locations where we're going to install them. So-
We can address that issue at that point. Okay, that's all I had after a second.
Mr. Draymond?
I just wanted to touch on one thing related to a point that Mr. Najarian brought up with regard to the letter in the paper. And someone else had written in, or maybe it was a columnist, I can't, or someone in the Glendale news press had also touched on, you know, maybe there should be drought-tolerant plants in the Montrose Shopping Park as part of its landscape scheme. I just want to point out, actually on this, let me ask Mr. McFaul because- I just want to point out, actually on this, let me ask Mr. McFaul, because he's a, probably knows more about flora than anyone on this, on this dais at the moment. What do dwarf rafts, flax, agapanthus, and Fortnite lilies all have in common?
Mr. McFaul usually only responds to the Latin names.
Sorry.
I think, I think that description is adequate. Not wanting, they make it sound like a trick question of some sort, but all of those, you know, a couple of things they have in Glendale, they have fibrous root systems, they grow in very tight areas, they don't have.
They're also on a, on a published list of?
Their California-friendly.
Yeah, they're all on the list, California drought-tolerant plants is what they are. And that's about 95 percent or more of what is planted in the Montrose Shopping Park. The only thing that's not really are the, are some of the well-established trees that are there and the bedding plants that, that are alternated. So, anyway, just thought I'd point that out.
And I just also want to point out that this is not a casual observation from Mr. McFaul. He is a graduate of Cal Poly San Luis Obispo in Pomona, and your degree?
Ornamental horticulture.
Ornamental horticulture.
And if he's lucky, can do it all in Latin.
With the background, with a background as the former director of our Parks Department, so he absolutely knows what he's talking about.
Friedman's going to be seeing you a lot.
No, no, no.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Can I make a comment before I vote? Which is just that, I am going to vote for it, but I am a little concerned that we're adding so many exceptions that we may confuse people, so I'm a little worried about that. I hope it doesn't happen. I think that it's good to have some flexibility. I also hope that people don't take advantage of this.
We'll find out.
So, with that, I will say yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eric Quintero. I will say yes, but with the editorial comment that I agree with Ms. Friedman that we're doing these exceptions, and I hope people aren't confused. I'm very happy that we have achieved our 15 to 18 percent reduction, but we still have a long way to go, so, yes. Next, please.
At 7B is interim urgency ordinance extending the moratorium on the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries for a period of 10 months and 15 days. This was offered on October 20th, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mayor would like to move 7B.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eric Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
At 7C is ordinance amending section 30.15.040 and 30.47.030 of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to landscape plans when revisions are consistent with California-friendly plantings. PZON 2009-003 offered on 10/20/2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mayor would move 7C.
Second.
Okay, can someone, not Mr. McFaul, but if he'd like to, but can someone give the audience some idea of what we're doing with this ordinance? Just a quick thumbnail.
Yes, the ordinance basically allows approved landscape plans that have been approved by the Design Review Board in particular, or by staff in the past, but have not been implemented yet, can, can come to the Planning Department and with the help of planning staff, existing plans on those drawings that are not drought tolerant could be replaced with California-friendly plants. At the staff level, we'll review those and we can approve them.
And it doesn't mean that, that those plants will necessarily be smaller or grow to a smaller size?
No, that doesn't mean that at all. There is a, an extensive list of California-friendly plants that can be used.
Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eric Quintero.
Yes.
Next.
Under action items, at 8A is acting chief of police regarding creation of regional fugitive task force comprised of the United States Marshal Service, Pasadena Police Department, the Burbank Police Department, and the Glendale Police Department, resolution appropriating $32,000.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ron DePampa, acting police chief. And I'll be brief, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to let you know about an exciting public safety initiative that we're kicking off next week. That will be a, a regional tri-city task force comprised of the US Marshal Service, members of the Glendale Police Department, Pasadena Police Department, and Burbank Police Department. We've brought to you, you know, a variety of different strategies that help to improve our efficiency in terms of policing the community of Glendale. But one of those strategies certainly is the idea of joining forces with our neighbors and, and finding ways to bring tri-city efforts together to share resources and, and help focus on, on common problems. And this is one of the ones that we're quite excited about. But moreover than, than the efficiency aspects, one thing that, that we feel this task force will do, and it's important to let you know and the public know, and that is address what we feel is kind of a looming public safety threat in the future. And we've certainly mentioned, and I know you're aware, that as part of the state's effort to, to cut their, their budget and, and balance their, their, their budget at the state level, was looking at the California Department of Corrections and specifically the prison system and the early release of anywhere from 25,000 to 27,000 felons from our state prison system. And while that hasn't been completely resolved as to, as to what shape or form that will, that will ultimately take place, we know that, that that is on the horizon. Additionally, the state of California received a mandate from, from the federal court to reduce the, the state prison population by as much as 45,000 felons over the course of two years. And, and that's equally, if not more so concerning for us, because what it means to us is that a large percentage of those early releases will come back to LA County. We know that. And, and certainly that will impact the, the tri-city area and put many of those back in our neighborhoods. And research has indicated clearly that there's a very high recidivism rate with early releases from state prison to include violent crime. So, we are very concerned that, that this represents a, a very clear and pending threat in the future to our area and something that we have to be prepared to address. And that's tough to do when all three agencies have lost public safety resources as a result of, of the economic recession. But this is one, one strategy that, that we think will, will be of great benefit to the city of Glendale and our neighbors. It will put a, a very proactive unit on the streets to, with the sole mission of holding our most serious felons accountable for their crimes and, and tracking down fugitives and, and bringing them to justice. And we are going to house this task force at the Glendale Police Department. It'll be about 12, 10 to 12 members when it's, when it's finalized. And the, the nice thing about it is that the US Marshal Service will pay for all costs above the personnel commitment to include overtime and, and equipment. So, that'll be of, of great benefit to us to have that, that kind of support from, from the federal side. So, we wanted to, to certainly bring that to your attention and to the community's attention. It will, we plan on, on having it go live next week, and then with probably a more formal introduction and announcement to the community a few weeks following that through, through a planned press release. But we're excited to, to have that come to fruition, and we will be keeping you advised as to the progress they make. Probably on a quarterly basis, they'll be reporting on, on their efforts and, and the progress they've made with, with our, the criminal element that, that we're looking to bring to, to justice. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about it, and we look forward to, to bringing you more information in the future as well.
Any questions?
We'll make a motion when you're ready.
Okay, Ms. Weaver.
Move 8A1. Hallelujah.
Well, let me just ask a question. I'll second it. So, these aren't just federal fugitives, these are state fugitives as well that.
That, that is correct, and not only fugitives, but we're concerned about potential suspects that, that we may have in our area, and there'll be, will be some proactive enforcement and monitoring of, of these individuals. But certainly, when we have identified suspects that, that have arrest warrants that need to be brought to justice, this is a team that, that will track them down and, and accomplish that.
Will they look like any other officer? Are they going to wear, you know, black, black fatigues or anything, or?
Well, they very well might when they're actually out serving either an arrest or a search warrant. But other than that, they'll, they'll be very similar in appearance to the detectives that are currently working for, for the three cities. And there'll be, obviously, there'll be a lot of investigative casework that will go along with carrying out their mission.
Actually, I wanted to report Mr. Drayman is a fugitive.
We'll track him down.
He left early. He's not feeling well. Good idea. I think this is a very good idea. Happy it'll be based here in the Glendale PD. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eric Quintero.
Yes.
Next.
Next is oral communications. There was one card submitted. Discussion is limited time, is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And City Manager may refer the matter to their appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Have one card, Keith Gonzalez.
Well, I'm here to actually address an issue regarding emissions and fuel economy.
Your name for the record again.
Oh, Keith Gonzalez. Satet Global is the company that I'm representing, and the product is, it's extreme fuel treatment. What the product does is it drastically reduces emissions on average of about 45 percent, gets better fuel economy, increases fuel economy about an average of 20 to 30 percent across the board. The product was formulated originally 22 years ago and was primarily marketed overseas because fuel prices overseas are a lot higher than what they are here. So, the company has redirected their focus here to the United States because gas prices were on the rise about a year and a half ago or so. So, what we're looking to do is present you guys with some information and some packets, and that we can kind of go over the, the commercial aspect of what this product has done, some of the reports and whatnot.
Great, you have the packets.
There's a total of six here.
And already make sure Mr. Zern gets a packet, would you? Okay, is that it, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian.
Well, this is, we can't go back and forth, but this is a, is this only for diesel engines or for gasoline as well?
Everything. Gasoline. Anything left, we'll tie that in.
Okay.
The, the, what really separates this product?
You really want to get into this?
No, I'm sorry, we have these.
We'll speak after, we'll speak after the meeting.
Not a problem.
I'm sure Mr. Zern may have some interest in this.
All right, next. Is there any new business?
Yes. I would like to move that the city of Glendale indemnifies Lieutenant Ian Grimes and Officer Arthur Frank for punitive damages in the total amount of $150,000, which was imposed against them following a jury trial in the matter of Edmund Ovecian versus City of Glendale, case number CV08-00194 CAS. This decision is made pursuant to California Government Code, section 825B, which provides that a public entity is authorized to pay that part of a judgment that is for punitive or exemplary damages if the governing body of that public entity, acting in its sole discretion except in cases involving an entity of the state government, finds all of the following. One, the judgment is based on an act or omission of an employee or former employee acting within the course and scope of his or her employment as an employee of the public entity. Two, at the time of the act giving rise to the liability, the employee or former employee acted or failed to act in good faith without actual malice and in the apparent best interests of the public entity. And three, payment of the claim or judgment would be in the best interests of the public entity. The findings supporting this decision are summarized as follows. As to the first element, because Detective Frank and Lieutenant Grimes were acting as police officers on behalf of the city of Glendale when they investigated the incident involving the murder of Christopher Shana Hazari in November of 2005, they were acting within the course and scope of their employment. As to the second element, we find that the officers acted in good faith without actual malice and in the apparent best interests of the public entity. There is no bright line rule to determine when probable cause exists for an arrest. Rather, a police officer must make that determination based on his training and experience and the totality of information and evidence which he has at the time of the arrest. In this case, the officers believed they had probable cause to arrest Edmund Ovecian for murder based on various factors. They presented the case to the district attorney within two days as the law requires, and the district attorney filed charges against Mr. Ovecian for murder. A superior court judge subsequently held Mr. Ovecian to answer at a preliminary hearing. The undisputed facts establish that all of the evidence known to the officers and within their possession was turned over to the district attorney within two weeks of the filing. Moreover, once the case was filed, the officers continued to investigate the leads they were given and which they uncovered. Over the course of the seven months following the filing, the officers interviewed witnesses, attempted to verify Mr. Ovecian's alibi, and gathered evidence. Their conduct in interrogating another suspect ultimately led to that suspect's confession and the exoneration of Mr. Ovecian. We recognize that this was a very unfortunate incident. However, based on the facts summarized above, we find that the officers acted in good faith without actual malice and in apparent best interests of the city of Glendale. As to the third element, we find that payment of the judgment will be in the best interests of the city of Glendale. As explained above, this case involved a judgment call of two seasoned officers. They believed that probable cause existed, and their belief was confirmed when the district attorney filed a murder charge against Mr. Ovecian and when the superior court judge held him to answer at a preliminary hearing. District attorneys have absolute immunity for their actions. Not indemnifying the officers in this case may cause them to hesitate before making necessary decisions or before taking a case to the district attorney.
Okay, do it. Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eric Quintero.
Yes.
New business? Mr. Najarian.
Compromise and resolve for the 120,000 dollars.
Mike?
And the same is.
Thank you.
And the same is hereby approved and accepted, and the finance directors authorized to issue
a warrant and said sum payable to Ara Gulaserian for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eric Quintero.
Yes.
Next.
Their motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.